Falmouth Community Television's coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
St. Joseph Parish of Falmouth provides a place to worship God and refresh your spirit with others. Here are some of our upcoming events.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Since 1971, Sea Education Association has been inspiring ocean scholars, stewards, and leaders at sea and on our Woods Hole campus with programs for college, gap, and high school students. More information at sca.edu.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. 508-548-0911.
Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The Attorneys at Oppenheim and Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers of quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calphi Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calphi cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calphinesurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design, 508-540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations. Lisa Peterson Asendorf, William Rabus Real Estate Mortgage Insurance. Grassi Septic Solutions. J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road. Dalpe Excavation Incorporated. Info@dalpeexcavation.com. Village Lamp and Repair Shop. Every lighthouse needs a keeper. FriendsOfNobsga.org. People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org. Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth. Two Water Street, Woods Hole. The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions. 781-930-5000. Wacoite Congregational Church. Sora's Flower Garden Nursery. M. Duffney Builders. Neighborhood Falmouth. Danny's Barber Shop. David Rogers Electric. Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990. Chapman Funerals and Cremations. Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth. Mahoney's Garden Center. The Cape Cod Five. And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More. Additional support provided by... Roach Brothers. Windfall. Walmart.
We have reorganized so that all of the names are strictly in alphabetical order to try to make it a little easier for members to be able to identify their vote. And we also have increased each slide by a couple of seconds so that you have a better opportunity to find your name. So instead of trying to figure out which precinct we're on and where your name is, it's strictly alphabetical order. And we have additional time on each slide. Okay, all Town Meeting members, make sure you have your electronic voting device. Come on down, take your seats. If you're present, please press 1A. Are we going to restart? Okay, I thought we were just doing 12 minutes. Okay, we're going to recalibrate the slide for the quorum. All Town Meeting members are on the floor along with anyone who is a department head. Up in the balcony, we have members of the public. There's a microphone up there for anyone in the public that wants to speak. Make sure you stand up so that I can see you. And then when I recognize you, you'll be able to speak from the microphone. Tonight around 9 o'clock, we will take a break. We have some refreshments down in the cafeteria. Want to remind all Town Meeting members to identify yourself by name and precinct each time you speak. That would be for our transcriber and also for folks watching on television. Want to thank FCTV for live broadcast of Town Meeting. Unfortunately, our microphone carriers are not present tonight due to illness. And so if anyone would like to volunteer to be a microphone carrier tonight, we would appreciate that. Mr. Lowell, thank you. On my right, Mr. Lowell, and somebody on my left. Okay. Carissa April, Ms. April, thank you. So all present, please press 1A for the quorum. So if you are present and you pressed 1A, your name should be in green. I have an announcement. The Department of Public Works is hosting a clothing and textile collection on November 19th and 20th in the parking lot in front of the Falmouth Senior Center and the Gus Canney Center. Recent changes to state regulations no longer allow disposal of these materials in the trash. This event will provide an outlet for worn, out-of-season, or excess quantities of clothing and household textiles. Again, that's November 19th and 20th in the parking lot in front of the Senior Center and the Gus Canney Center. What happened there? Why do I have zero for a quorum count? One minute, I want to find out what happened with the quorum count. So we should press 1A again? All Town Meeting members present, please press 1A again for the establishment of the quorum. Nick, could you do me a favor? Could you take one of those wireless mics and bring it up to the balcony? We do not have another microphone in the balcony. Thank you. Ms. April, would you be a teller in the first division? Can our tech guys tell us what the 190 means in the top right of that screen? Is that the response? Okay, by a counted vote of 190, we have a quorum, and I call this town meeting into session. All present, please rise for the presentation of the colors by Cub Scout PAC 41, The Arrow of Light Scouts. Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll recognize Melissa Key for our invocation.
Heavenly Father, may our meeting this evening be not only an exercise of care and concern for our community and its residents, but also an example of how a community can agree and disagree and still be a community. We ask you to watch over and protect our families, our community, our nation, and our world. May your gift of peace become a reality for all. Amen.
In April of 1987, I sat in Row M of this auditorium, wearing one of these uniforms. And a gentleman that was sitting at this rostrum made an indelible impression on me as an individual and on my life, both of public service and professionally. That gentleman left this rostrum in 1991 to become a judge in the Massachusetts court system. But until this year, when he passed away, to me, he always was and always will be Mr. Moderator. And for our moment of silence tonight, I want us to remember my friend, your moderator, George LeBerts. Colors, post. Ladies and gentlemen, the Cub Scouts from my alma mater, Cub Scout PAC 41, The Arrow of Light Scouts. I think a few of them want to sit up here. Okay, we've had a municipal election since our last town meeting. So at this point, I'll recognize the town clerk for the swearing-in of our new Town Meeting members. Mr. Clerk.
Will the following people please stand to be sworn in? Carissa April Alfredo Bell... Albert Fritzl, Virginia Lan McGuire, Richard Latimer, David Martin, Thomas Peterson, Peter Wasdor, Matthew Waterbury, James Newman, Mary Berry, Wendy Buesler, Robert Dugan, Jared Goldstein, Susan Madigan, Gerald Batamis, Charles Rader, Shannon Sylvester, Gina Tortili, Keith Swagel, Anthony Fusaro, Donna Hurst, Michael McCarthy, Gerald Swadd, Ed Schwartz, Thomas Walrath, Julie Willing, Steve Mealy, Robert Baker, Kathleen Berrio, Tammy Chase, Maureen O'Connor, Stephen Patton, Barbara Schneider, Scott Thrasher, Wendy Vogel... Thrasher, Wendy Vogel, Scott Solinsky, Ruth Brazier, Doug Brown, Russ Ferrera, Michael Casperian, Nick Lowell, Kevin Murphy, Deborah Rogers, Robert Young, Catherine Jewett, Michael Cohen, Richard Doobie, Catherine Elder, Annie Hart Cool, James Morris, Lisa Payalisi, Deborah Stifle, Kurt Stifle, Andrea Thorold, Eleanor Bovier, Richard Bradley, Gerald Caligiano, Carol Dombrowski, Donna Noonan, John Noonan, Tara Valli, Donna Weymouth, Alula Welsh, Madison Valli, John Barclay, Megan Braga, Linda Davis, Sarah Floyd, Jason Hyatt, Amy Linnardi, Lisa Lutchenstein, Ashley Pullman, Lori Robbins, David DuBois, Cara Galasso Garcia, Frank Gashucker, Richard Gulat, David Haddad, Karen Higraes, Peter Higraes, Clayton Jones, and Deborah Winograd. Please rise and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of town meeting member according to the best of my ability and agreeable to the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the Town of Falmouth. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to start with the dispensing of the reading of the warrant. Chair of the board, the select board for the main motion. Okay, you've all heard the main motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official part of the record. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and summoned the inhabitants of the Town of Falmouth qualified to vote on town affairs as said warrant directs by posting an attested copy thereof in town hall and in every precinct in the town, signed by Constable Thomas Zine. At this time, the chairman intends a motion for town employees who are not residents of the town the right to speak before any issue at this town meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this time, I'd recognize the planning board for a notification of public hearing.
Charlotte Harris, Precinct 5, and Chair of the Planning Board. This is sort of a redux. You are familiar. I want to ask you first, before we begin, that you got this. You did. Okay, good. I'm very, very glad. Thank you. I will read that, the warrant article, right, that we're going to vote on.
The notification of public hearing.
I don't have the notification.
The clerk should have the notification of public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Paul Dry. I'm clerk of the Planning Board and town meeting member, Precinct 2. In accordance with Chapter 48, Section 5, Massachusetts General Law, and Article 43 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, public hearings were held on September 13th, 27th, and October 11th on Article 3 for the November 2022 Fall Town Annual Meeting, and all those who wished to speak were heard. As required, a report is hereby submitted with the planning board's final language and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So tonight, we are not going to use a blanket vote. We have a small warrant. We're going to jump right into each article rather than wasting any time. So we'll go through each article with a main motion, and then when we get to our omnibus budgets, the capital and non-capital budgets, we'll go through the main motion section by section. No need to say hold. You just get up if you want to speak within those articles, and we'll deal with the line items within those budgets. So Article 1 is to choose all other necessary town officers. This would be for Finance Committee. There are currently no vacancies on the Finance Committee, so Mr. Chairman, for the main motion of Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I recommend indefinite postponement for Article 1.
You've all heard the main motion, indefinite postponement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 2, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I recommend the town vote Article 2 as printed.
As printed. This is to hear reports from committees and town officers. I have the school committee. I'd like to make a report.
Just waiting for them to queue up the slides. Good evening. I'm Andrea Thorold, the Vice Chair of the Falmouth School Committee, and I'm here with the superintendent to give you a brief update on the status of our school district. If you regularly tune into our school committee meetings, you will hear us start each of those meetings with a reading of our mission and vision statements. These words are a reminder of our commitment to students and a responsibility to make decisions that will help them become creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens, effectively communicating and solving problems that impact the world around them. Underscoring our vision are our core values, statements that were distilled through a process of talking to members of our community, teachers, family, staff, and students from all of our schools. These core values, empowering students to find joy in their learning, encouraging a life of growth and wellness, embracing each other's differences, and cultivating community, these values help us to achieve that vision. But I want to bring your attention to the statement on the screen before you. A community committed to excellence, every student, every day. You may have come across that statement on the school website, or on a sheet of letterhead, or a banner hanging in one of our schools, and to some, it may look like a tagline. But it isn't just a tagline. It is both our North Star guiding our work and a measuring stick that we compare our progress to. The key components of this statement are both that the whole community is committed to excellence, like this body that has regularly supported the schools and enabled them to do their important work, and also that excellence is possible for every student in Falmouth Public Schools, no matter their background or needs. If I had more time tonight, I would show you image after image of our amazing students. It's not about the programs and initiatives. It's about the kids that we reach with these programs. It's about the students. And it has to be about every single one of them. And with that, I'd like to pass the microphone over to Superintendent Dr. Dorr to tell you a little bit more about how we're putting these ideals into action.
Thank you. So just to talk a little bit about our enrollment, this year, we have 3,015 students. The enrollment has been declining here in Falmouth, as well as all towns across the Cape. But while the enrollment has been declining, our needs have been rising. Looking at our different demographics, our economically disadvantaged students has risen from the school year 2009, 2010 at 20.9% to this current year to 43.6%. That's over 391 students that meet the economic disadvantaged qualification over the past four years. Our multilingual learners, we have risen since the FY10 school year at 1.2% to 5.8% this school year. In the last four years, we have risen 52 students. Our students with disabilities, in FY10, we have came in at 17.5% students, and today we are at 22.2%. Over the past four years, we have increased by 111 students with disabilities. And I mention this because our needs have changed, and we need to address the needs. As Andrea has mentioned to us, every student, every single student, every day matters, and we need to meet their needs. Over the last three years, we have increased our services for students. We have added reading specialists, two reading specialists over the last two years, an early learning coach, an additional math coach, two ELD teachers, three school adjustment counselors, and a gap counselor. And a gap counselor is someone that helps our students work on their credits so that they can meet graduation. We have had a lot of budget pressures over the last few years, and thank goodness that the state had come through with the COVID aid for us, our ESAR funds, that has allowed us to address the needs of the students by increasing our supports in our programs for students. We are very fortunate for the Town of Falmouth that we are well taken care of. Our buildings are well taken care of. We did not have to spend our ESAR dollars on building maintenance, on our heating systems, or technology, where many towns across the Commonwealth needed to spend their dollars in these areas. We were able to start addressing needs when the needs started arising. So we were very fortunate. So with reading services, our mass support, our English language development program for our students, our special education service counseling supports, and yes, low class sizes, we have been able to maintain because of those ESAR dollars. We are in a situation now that the ESAR dollars are about to go away, and it's perfect timing that the state has allocated dollars to districts based on the needs of other students that I just mentioned. We all know that Massachusetts leads the nation in many measures, including student learning experiences, student achievement, and post-secondary success for its students. But taking a closer look, we know that there's also inequitable gaps among our racial and ethnic groups, our economic disadvantaged students with disabilities, and our English learners. I would like to continue to be able to offer the same services that we've been able to offer over the last three years to meet the students' needs with this additional funding that's being offered to districts based on these categories and these needs, so that every student can be successful. Thank you.
Okay. Conservation Commission?
Hello. I'm Jen Lincoln, the Falmouth Conservation Administrator. The Conservation Commission is pleased to sponsor a report on the Upper Child's River Restoration Project to be presented by Gary Anderson of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. Gary is the project leader for this incredible restoration effort. He is the treasurer of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club and a resident of Precinct 7. Where'd Gary go? Oh, there he is. Gary?
Mr. Moderator, I request six minutes for my report.
Okay. Requesting six minutes rather than five. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to all of you. Good evening. I'm Gary Anderson from Precinct 7, and I'm also the treasurer of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. We're all aware of the bad news that is bombarding us daily. Tonight, I want to share with you a good news story, which is a direct outcome of this legislative body's decision-making. I last came before you, over five years ago, asking for your support of an article to authorize the select board to transfer a parcel of town-owned land, commonly known as the Farley Bog, to the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club to facilitate a conservation project proposed by the club. The project's goals were to rehabilitate the Child's River, to create a cold-water fishery, to foster the return of native brook trout, and to restore the abandoned Farley Cranberry Bog to wetlands. Several conditions were imposed by the article, such as placing a conservation restriction on the parcel, getting legislative approval of the Massachusetts House and Senate for the transfer, and completing the proposed project. That night, the article passed unanimously. Thank you. Here's a look at the project area before we began. Key to success was the removal of an earthen dam which surrounded this pond over here, and it caused the river to back up, creating stagnant ponds to the north and to the south of Cary Shop Road. Those ponds warmed the river so that it became uninhabitable for brook trout. The undersized and failing culvert, which is right here, also needed to be replaced. The abandoned Farley Cranberry Bog was going wild, and it needed to be restored. The project was estimated to cost nearly $3 million, and to take about four years to complete. The club's membership put skin in the game by donating $68,000 of its own funds to get the project started. The club then received several grants from federal, state, and local organizations, including two awards from the Falmouth Community Preservation Committee. Throughout the engineering and construction process, the project team dealt with many challenges, such as work stoppages to document historic artifacts uncovered during the project, permitting delays, the premature collapse of the old culvert under Cary Shop Road, and delays in fabricating the new culvert due to COVID-19 shutdowns. But with tremendous support from our partners and several town departments and boards, we succeeded. On July 1, 2021, the new Child's River was turned on with water flowing freely through the rehabilitated stream bed for the first time in nearly a century. All conditions in the article have been met, and the project is completed. This project, like the Coonamesset River Project, demonstrates the extraordinary recreation, water quality, and coastal resiliency benefits of river restoration projects. After construction, you can see the new Child's River Stream Bed meandering north and south. There's the north side of Cary Shop Road, along the shaded west side. Since these pictures were taken, planting has been completed, and greenery abounds in the area. Also shown is the new enlarged culvert, which is shown right there. This project, the results of this are a new cold-water fishery and a rehabilitated river, and a restored wetlands at the Farley Bog with a new waterfowl production area at the north end. That's a brand-new pond. Here's a graph of water temperatures before and after construction. Temperatures below 60 degrees below this line right here are ideal for brook trout to survive and thrive. We've created a Goldilocks zone for brook trout habitat, not too hot and not too cold. Over several years, Massachusetts fish biologist Steve Hurley conducted electroshock fish sampling of the Child's River. Before the project, no trout were found in the Child's River. Beginning shortly after the July 1 turn-on, when the Child River was turned on, brook trout began to scout out this new river habitat. This past September, in an area representing only a small portion of the river, 84 brook trout were tagged, including 16 trout as far north as the Farley Bog. There are now brook trout where they've been unable to survive for many decades. As proof of the project's success, here's a screenshot from an underwater video taken right below our clubhouse, showing five of the newly tagged 84 brook trout. On behalf of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, thank you to town meeting, the Conservation Commission, the CPC, DPW, the Select Board, and our legislative delegation Representative Dave Viera and Senator Sumiran for your trust, support, and generosity. And a special thanks to Betsy Gladfelter for allowing us to go to school on her amazing Coonamesset River Restoration Project. Oh, and one more thing. Our project came in under budget. We did not spend one penny of the second award from the Falmouth CPC. Therefore, we are releasing $151,498 back to the CPC, so that other worthwhile projects in our wonderful community can benefit as well. in our wonderful community can benefit as we have. Thank you.
I tell you, these fish really wanted to come up that river. Before they opened it, our Girl Scout troop meets at the Rod and Gun Club, and we were down where they had the barrier, and the brookies were like at the barrier waiting for it to come down. I'll never forget that. Good, good job, Gary. Any other committees to make reports?
Good evening. I'm Alan Robinson, Chair of the Solid Waste Advisor Committee and a resident of Falmouth. Great. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I think you all know the elements of our committee and our role. Take a leading, take a leading role to, in helping the town maintain and enhance its integrated solid waste management program, encourage development and implementation of environmentally, physically, and socially sound means and methods for reducing solid waste tonnage, and operating the pick-of-the-litter swap shop to promote waste reduction and I'll get this shot. We've got a few acknowledgements. It's been a very good year, and I think we've got a good news story, too. But before I get to what our committee's achieved, I want to relate that last week, I was at the semi-annual litter, litter meeting of the Care for the Cape and Islands. And each year, the Care for the Cape and Islands announces two awards to organizations that have promoted environmental stewardship, ones for adults and ones for students. And the winners this year were, was the Falmouth High School Environmental Club. For their years and years of commitment and support for the environment in the school and in the community, I don't know if there's any members of the club who are here tonight, but I just want to express appreciation for what they do. Very special word. There are three students, three students and their advisor were, were at our meeting, and they represented themselves very well. It's been a good year. We want to thank you, Town Meeting. In this past spring, you approved Article 17 related to authorizing the Board of Health to have responsibility for the rules and regulations for establishing rules for recycling and waste materials in Falmouth. We've, we, our committee has worked very closely with the Board of Health. We've had two public hearings. We got some very good input from the public. And we have a third public meeting scheduled for two weeks from tonight. And we hope at that time that the Board of Health will approve those rules and regulations. So thank you for assigning them that responsibility. Second, a year ago tonight, you all approved funding for the purchase of 21,000 recycling carts and gave the Department of Public Works responsibility for taking care of that. We want to thank, we as Solid Waste Advisor Committee, want to really appreciate the efforts that the DPW has done this year, starting with that very difficult period that we all encountered in spring and early summer, when our trash and our recyclables just weren't being picked up on a regular basis. There was a lot of concern in the community. The DPW worked very hard with the contractor, doing everything that the DPW could do to move them along. Very fortunately, the contractor changed. And the collection system was restored, and I think right now, I think we're all, virtually all of us, and hopefully all of us, are receiving our regular pickups. Took a lot of work and a lot of outreach to the community during that period of time, and they did a very good job. Second is that rollout. 21,000 carts. A big, big job, and it was done. There is a lot of community concern. That concern was voiced here a year ago. It was voiced in letters to the editor. It was voiced in lots of telephone calls and emails to the board and to, to the DPW. But DPW worked with the community and designed a program, carried it out, and got things done very, very well. And it was just a tremendous effort. And it goes along with really a change that we see in the, in the, in the Department of Public Works, something we've been advocating for, and that is really reaching out more to the community. They have been doing a great deal of that this year. There's still more they can do, but they were approved to have a Facebook page related to solid waste and recycling. There was a series of public meetings. There was outreach. There's working together with individuals who were challenged by the large carts, and it's been, it's been a real change, and it's very gratifying from our committee to see it happen. We'd like to particularly thank Peter Johnson Staub and Peter McConney, because in the heat of that moment in July and August, when the DPW staff, and particularly the recycling and solid waste coordinator, really needed to be there to get these things rolled out, they found a way to increase her hours from 19, which is what she is, a part-time employee, to full-time for those two months, and it made a tremendous, tremendous difference. And we really like to thank the entire Falmouth community for their, their willingness to work with the department, and the success of that.
Okay, our five minutes is up. Do you want to request a certain amount of additional time?
Yes, just one more minute, please.
One more minute? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it.
My clicker still isn't, isn't getting there. But we made one request. We met with the solid, we met with, with, oh, there we are. We, we met with the Select Board last week for our annual presentation. And we've talked about the challenge that we see for this year for the Department of Public Works and our committee. And that is to continue to reduce the town of Falmouth's trash tonnage by developing a multifaceted waste reduction plan. And to do that, we requested that the DPW leadership, the Town Manager's Office, the Finance Director, the Finance Committee, and Select Board, and Town Meeting all support the following: to ensure that the town's fiscal year 2024 operating budget includes a line item funding the DPW's recycling and waste management coordinator position as a full-time position at a salary grade commensurate with the actual level of responsibility. Making that position from part-time to full-time will make a tremendous change and will allow us to really move forward with reducing our trash tonnage and everything associated with environmental stewardship related to our waste in Falmouth. So thank you for that extra time, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you all.
Thank you. Any other reports of committees? Hearing another question will come on the main motion. Except the reports, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article three, this is the planning board article. Madam Chair, for the main motion.
Motion here in your warrant, I'll read it to you. Article three. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw.
You can just say as printed.
Excuse me?
You could just say as printed.
As printed.
As printed is the main motion. Madam Chair.
But we have a presentation for you to be sure that you actually do understand what you're voting on. So if we could have that slides up, please? Excuse me? We have the planning board slides?
You need to just hit the clicker to advance the slide.
Here it is. Okay, this is what we're going to go over, and I'd like to explain why, why we're being so thorough about being sure you understand. That was the Attorney General's problem, the concern that you might not have. So we're trying our hardest to be sure you do understand. So now we're going to go over the background and current status, the Attorney General's subsequent review, the planning board's approach to coming back to you, public hearing comments and revisions, and a public education campaign that we have been conducting. And in order to pass this recodification, we're going to need a two-thirds vote. So what are we going to do? Why are we here again? Last year, you may recall, the Town Meeting approved the recodification. There were questions, there were answers, and the vote was two-thirds, and you approved it. We had said that it included reformatting, reorganization, and changes to some texts, outdated text deleted and clarifying text added. What's the current status? The process here is, once it's approved by the Town Meeting, and this will happen again. If you approve this again tonight, it's going to go back to the Attorney General. And it went to the Attorney General's, and we expected an answer. We got, and we expected approval, is what we expected. And we got the answer, and they identified procedural issues, not problems with the bylaw. The bylaw didn't have problems. It was the procedure that was used that had a problem. And in order to clarify that, they sent us a list of what they considered substantive changes, because we had not said in the warrant article that we were asking for substantive changes. And here is that warrant article that you were sent last year. We were saying, we told you that we made an attempt to have no changes, that was a reorganization, renumbering, and deletions. And yet, in our explanation, we didn't expand on that, and you'll see, it says right in the, in the explanation, the reorganization is not intended to change the bylaws. Indeed, that was our intent, and that is what last year's warrant article said. This year's warrant article, if you pored over it very, very carefully, you'll see that it says something quite different. And in the second and third sentence, and to make clerical and substantive revisions. Substantive is one of those words. People can disagree on what's substantive and what's not. The AG's office didn't agree with our judgment on what was the substantive and not change, so they returned it to us. Now we're asking you to recognize that what you're going to be approving includes things that they may have considered that, that we're updating existing texts, we're adding new texts to clarify and specify the structure, and we're adding recent Town Meeting-approved bylaw language. So these are, in fact, changes to the old bylaw. They were in the bylaw that you approved last year, many of them, but we didn't label them as substantive changes. The document that the Attorney General's Office sent back to us had 85 examples of what they were calling substantive changes. What we did in order to, to deal with this, the, first, let me say, the kinds of things that they sent back really could be grouped into five categories. Oversights, where they thought it wasn't, that it was taken out of the new bylaw, and it wasn't. They didn't find it. Mistakes made by the town team. The town team was comprised, we worked for over four years on it. It was comprised of members of the zoning board of appeals, members of the planning board, the staff associated with both of those boards, the legal department, the building commissioner, and anyone else we needed to answer questions for us as we went along. So it was a very knowledgeable team working on it over a long period of time. We did add some new texts. Language was added. We made some changes and updates, and we found also there was a category that we could call, yes, that might be a substantive change. We found six of those, and we'll point out what they are. The oversights made by the Attorney General's Office, just to give you some examples of that right here, they added, they said things were changed. You know, we reorganized it from 47 articles to 14 articles. A lot changed. Things went into charts rather than in dense paragraphs. They didn't find all the things they were looking for, even though they were there. We were able to find them and to point out, oh, this isn't a change. It was somewhere else you didn't find it. We changed footnotes. You'll see, that's the second example, on a senior care retirement district, to increase height of buildings to 45 feet. Existing text is in the current bylaw. It's not new. We found that. And a third example on density, it was there, they just didn't find it. Mistakes made by the town team. What are we now calling mistakes? Where the bylaw that we were calling the old bylaw allowed television and radio antennas not exceeding 50 feet above ground level, and we prohibited it when we changed it into a chart. That's been corrected. Here are three other things that have been corrected in the bylaw you're being asked to approve tonight, where it appeared that we had made a mistake, we have changed them in what you're looking at now. New text added, some examples. What kinds of things did we add? What we added were intended to clarify, didn't change the meaning, wouldn't change the application, but add a very short paragraph in advance of a dense section in order to make it clearer what the intent was, because the original purpose section didn't seem clear to us. Didn't change the bylaw. We've left it in. It was an addition so that the intention would be clearer. Changes and updates made. Where we had left out are, an example, the statutory powers of the ZBA. It was missing in the current bylaw, and consultants were asked to add it, because in fact, they had that authority, so it was best to put it into our bylaw. So we've left it there. The use regulations. Building permit shall commence 12 months rather than six months. That was approved here by Town Meeting. So we made that change. So it belongs there, and it's there. The six that we found, and we agreed with the AG, these were changes that we should have explained more thoroughly, and we didn't. So rather than asking you now to approve them, we've just taken them back out. They're not in what you're being asked to approve tonight. They'll come back to you in Phase Two, which we're going to begin working on, which will be changes purposefully made. So these things, where it seemed to us they're right, these were changes, we should have talked about it. And here are the exit, the six things that have been taken out. Two dealt with what's allowed in agricultural districts. So you can read them here, you can read them, I think you all got a copy of the handout. The wind energy systems not allowed, but they're allowed by special permit, previously prohibited. We'll come back to you about that. We'd like to make that change. We're not making it now. Another change in the agricultural district. When we moved it from a paragraph to a chart, it did make a change, and we'll come back to you about that. The limits on motorized equipment between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. We added to that that you couldn't make that kind of noise over the weekend. That's a change. And we took that out. You're not being asked to approve that now. Those are sort of tiny changes. This page includes one that actually is more than a tiny change. A planned residential development, not such a big change. It deals with the open space required, and we'll come back to you with that in Phase Two. Non-conforming structures, uses, and lots. This is the, the article that's most, that is administered by the ZBA rather than the Planning Board, and most of what they're administering is state law, and we included that in the change that we brought to you last year. We should have made a long explanation of it. We didn't. We've gone back to the old language, and we'll come back to you with that next time. I hope it will be next time with Phase Two. So we've gone back to all of the old language for non-conforming structures, uses, and lots. Performance indicators summary table. This was in the restaurant section, and you can read it there. It's a small change, but it might be large enough and of concern to a very definite group of people that we agreed with the AG. We've taken it out. We're not asking you to approve it tonight. What approach do we take when we try to change things so that we could come back to you tonight and get your full approval, so that you would be confident in the bylaw, and you would be confident that you, that anything that's important has been brought to your attention? First, the planning team came back together, and we went over the items that they sent us, the 85 comments, and we took out the six that I told you about. We responded to the others. We fixed the errors and omissions so that they have either reverted to what they had been, or they have been included if they should have been included. We have changed Articles Three, Four, and Five that were in fact approved last November that, so that's in what you're being asked to sort of include in the bylaw. You already approved them, but they weren't in the bylaw. Now they will be in the bylaw. And we addressed comments.
Ms. Harris, the 10 minutes is expired. Do you want to?
Could I ask for extra time?
Yeah. How much?
Our momma's there, two minutes?
Two minutes? All those in favor of additional two minutes signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no.
Thank you. And we addressed comments about mixed use in the business district by putting information into a matrix, something that had been ambiguous became a yes or no, and that changed the meaning. So we have addressed that. Changes made after the close of the public hearing. The booklet that you were sent included the changes that I just named. They're there. The changes that aren't in the booklet are a result of the public hearings that Paul read the notice for. People came, they told us their concerns, what they were worried about, and we have addressed those. They were small. They've been addressed. They dealt with that matrix. But the thing that it did, been putting it into the table of contents, it changed the numbering. numbering. So that now, the numbers had to change all the way through. The indexes changed. The copy, if you want that copy that's been completely updated to that change from public hearing and with the renumbering, it's available in the planning office, it's available on our website, but it's not what you have in your hand. The other things we did for a public education campaign, wrote a letter to the enterprise, we had an FAQ sheet that was available and on the website, we held public meetings. There didn't seem to be a great deal of concern from the public, judging by the attendance. There's a whole new webpage there, anytime you want to look up something on it, it's there on the webpage. The complete comments from the AG's office is there with the consultant's comments so that you can see that. We've tried to be as transparent as possible so that you're fully educated on what it is you're being asked to do tonight. In fact, the reason we went to the expense of printing that booklet for you is to be sure you would feel fully educated and printed the copies and finally emailed to town meeting members. This is a picture that you can't read from where you are of what our webpage looks like, but be assured, it's there, if you go to the planning board on the town website, you'll find it easily and if you can't, please call. So I've tried to tell you why we're here again, what we've done to fix it up and how this bylaw is different from the version that you voted for last November. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Okay, open for discussion. Questions? Yeah, see a hand on the back? Oh, yeah, you want to start down here first? Nick, I got one on the right in the back.
Robert Dugan with precinct two. I was also on the working group at the time, I was a member of the ZBA. My issue with this is procedural. I think because we got such a late notification from the AG's office, there's a rush to get this vote at this town meeting versus the spring. What's not being said is that the information from the AG's office was not a formal response, it was an informal email. We would still respect, expect a formal response from the AG. So I understand that they're looking to answer the information that was given them in the email, but it's still not a formal response. The town meeting members were presented with the booklet that came this week from the planning board office. I think that's great that they sent it to us, it shows a nice clean copy, but there's nothing in there to reference what the changes were. You know, if a town meeting member opens that booklet and sees the clean copy, we have no idea what the changes were from the original bylaw. On the items that were set to phase two, they were set to phase two because of substantive changes, but there's no reason we can't do everything in phase two in the spring and work out a clean slate with the process that's gone so far. We've already had a situation where a presentation was made to this body last November and the information was incorrect and that's where we are, that's why we are where we are now. So I would ask that the town meeting voted no on this tonight, but with the expectation that it would come back for a vote in the spring, showing all meeting members what all the corrections were and give us a comparison with the information that we've received and only after we receive a formal response from the AG's office that lists what their final conclusions are, because basically, we're just trying to do changes guessing of what we think may work with the AG now.
Up in the back, whoever had their hand up. I can't see under there.
Robert Donahue, precinct three. I want to second what the gentleman ahead of me just said. I also, I don't know if all of you folks have sat down and tried to read this document. This is a fine example of government going absolutely crazy, I think. You have to hire lawyers and all kinds of specialty people if you want to do anything. It's just getting to the point of craziness, folks. If we can't read something and know what a bylaw is and what it's saying, I think it's just ludicrous, I really do. We wouldn't put up with it in business and we shouldn't have to put up with it in government. Things should be plain, it should be categorized and the normal person should be able to read it and totally understand it and know what he or she needs to do to get the job done. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Center section?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Carol Murphy, precinct nine. Am I correct in reading the label on this that it was $9.55 to mail this out?
If I may, for the record, my name is Jed Kornok, I'm the town planner. Yes, it was $9 to mail out. We felt that that was very important to mail out to the town meeting representatives so that you all could see the hard work that's gone into the bylaw. And I fully understand the sentiment of the body this evening, but I can reassure you that many eyes have reviewed this bylaw over the course of several months, not only myself but my staff, in addition to that, members of the zoning board of appeals through the working group, as well as former town council Frank Duffy, our current town council Maury O'Keefe. A lot of folks have spent a lot of time reviewing this bylaw to make sure that it's as accurate and comprehensive as possible. We've addressed every one of the Attorney General's concerns as they've outlined in, hopefully everyone got my email over the weekend, I apologize for sending that on Friday. But that item or that document that outlined the Attorney General's concern, which Madam Chairman provided examples of this evening, we've addressed every single one of those. We've added in the language that we heard at the public hearing, which we felt clarified or the planning board felt clarified, the mixed use in the business district. So I guess in summary, we've done everything that we possibly can to address the Attorney General's concern and we're hopeful that you hear that this evening.
So how much was this to print, the 148-page document? How much?
Altogether was roughly $4,500.
For all of us?
Correct.
And so there's going to be another document printed with the corrections?
No, we won't be printing another full document with the corrections. That is just a digital document. We've got copies at the town clerk's office and our office, but that is not, we do not plan to print again a final document.
Well, how are we going to have the corrections? Are you going to mail those out too?
So if everyone, when everyone walked in, on the side table, there was an explanatory memo that outlined all of the changes that we heard at the public hearing and specifically it related to the mixed use in the business district. So in the use table on page 40, what we heard at the public hearing was that we needed to add some clarifying text. All of that clarifying text already exists in the bylaw, in the current bylaw that we have. It was simply added to the use table to provide additional clarity about how mixed use is handled in the business district. So for example, if a property owner wants to combine commercial or non-residential uses with single or two-family dwellings, they can do that currently by right. That existing language is in the bylaw. Now, the use table specifically shows that for all of the business districts. In addition to that, because multifamily use is allowed by special permit in the business districts, that also is clarified in the use table. So now you'll see SPZ is the indication that a special permit from the zoning board of appeals is required for B1, B2 and B3.
So is this document accurate or not?
The one that you're holding, which I can't physically see, but-
It's 148 pages, it's the document that was sent to all of us.
It's not 100% correct because it was printed before the public hearing. So on the side table, as you walked in, that specific change in the business use table, that was the one change that was made, but because that language was added, everything shifts, so we had to update the table of contents. And then all internal references which are included in that document, just making sure that when the text says, refer to section, this is just an example, 12.2E, that that is accurate, that when you refer to that, that's the section that the bylaw is referring to.
Phase two, are we going to get another document for phase two next year?
The planning office is happy to print documents for any town meeting member that would like to see it.
And phase two will actually be articles because we'll have to vote the changes, so those actual changes will be articles and you'll have a motion for the changes for those. See Mr. Neto? Ms. April, can you do the next article? No, no, I'm saying, can you do the next article? We'll alternate just because we had to put one in the balcony. Thank you.
Joe Neto, precinct nine. I'd like to get an answer to something that Mr. Dugan said, that the Attorney General has given us just an informative response to this. So I found this somewhat confusing last week when I got my pamphlet and I said, what do I do with it? And saw what it was. And Attorney General, I'm a pass-watchman of the warrant and not everything we do here has always been accepted by the Attorney General's office. We've passed bylaws that they told us we couldn't do. So when Mr. Dugan said that it's an informal response, Mr. Moderator, if you would answer the question, if we get a formal response that says things are still wrong, what do we do?
You've got to come back.
Then if we have to come back, I would suggest that we wait and let this process, this is a zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth. Yeah, they are hard to understand and yes, you have to hire a lawyer. If any of us have ever been involved in that, you don't trust your own intelligence to these things, but they're very complex. And just to vote tonight to pass this and then to find out if there's still mistakes or omissions or errors and we've got to come back and do it again, I think it would behoove us to wait. It's interesting, we don't have any of those real estate lawyers speaking here tonight, Proakorn or something, so maybe they have, even they haven't studied it and that makes me nervous. So we've got plenty of time, good law admit, a lot of it, I guess. Thank you.
Ms. Leonardi?
Amy Leonardi, precinct eight. I want to echo what Mr. Dugan said, I think it comes down to a couple of issues. This was just, I appreciate all the work, I want to preface this, that the group and all these people between town hall and the committee have done on this and I appreciate that. However, to get this, not even two weeks before town meeting for us to review, to go back and forth between online, to try and see the changes, to know that it's based on an informal response, I think we're best to wait before moving forward on it. Thank you.
Mr. Potamus?
Jerry Potamus, precinct two. For a short while, I was on the review committee to establish it and I can assure you, there was deep debate on language definitions and at times, we did have input from various zoning attorneys. I think we're fortunate that we have an informal legal review, because I don't know of any zoning bylaw that we get a formal review before we pass it. The process is, we pass it, the best language we think, we send it to them, they voted up and down. I think to wait another several months, and I'm not sure we have to, if we're even going to get a formal review, I think it's not good government to delay this. This is needed. Our bylaws are Byzantine if you try to read them. If you want to go to sleep, listen to some of the ZBA meetings, because I don't think half the people speaking sometimes know what the law actually says, what they think it says, what they think town meeting says. We need to improve the process and clarify the language so we can have better governance in the zoning board of appeals. I think we have to pass this if we want to go forward. We're never going to have everybody read this from cover to cover. I may be misspeaking, few people read the town meeting articles cover to cover. So the entire zoning article, you know, I wish I knew what you're smoking. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Ms. Harris?
Jerry, thank you and thank you for your service on that long and tedious committee. I'd like to encourage you, please, to pass this tonight. Right now, we're in an odd kind of limbo. We have an old bylaw that is very, very difficult to use because things are scattered all over it. It grew over time since the 1970s, things got tacked onto it, you have to know how to thumb through it. It is made for ensuring that you have to hire professional help in order to get what you need from the planning board of the ZBA because of the confusion caused by the disorganization in the bylaw that we have now. For the most part, people never read the bylaw until they're trying to do something and then they are trying to find the part that applies to them. We didn't really expect town meeting members to read the whole bylaw, just to see that we were making it available to you, so if you wanted to look at it and had something in mind because you know that section of the bylaw, you'd be able to look at it. Without being able to pass it tonight, it hamstrings going forward to make any other useful changes in our bylaw. And part of the process of opening this can of worms of reorganization, people came forward with changes they would like, not just reorganization or reformatting, which is the predominant thing that you hold in your hands. We will never get to those useful changes if we keep putting off approving of this version that is substantially the old bylaw reformatted with some changes. So I ask you, please, to do that. The fact that it's an informal thing meant we didn't even have to respond to it if we didn't want to because it was outside of the AG's timeline for when they were supposed to have replied to us. That was the weight they gave to it. I'd like to see you give it similar weight and approve now what we've brought before you, this is clean a thing as we can do. So I hope that you will. Thank you.
Ron Smolowitz, precinct eight. Last town meeting, I had some questions about the bylaw. I couldn't find things that I was looking for in agriculture. It needed a lot of revision in my view. I spent three or four hours reading the new document and this is a real excellent job. It's amazing. I just asked myself certain questions. I was able to find the answers in the tables. I mean, it's a great job. What I don't understand is why it has to be approved tonight if we have to revisit it in the spring for corrections. We're operating under the set of bylaws that have developed over time, they've been problematic, but they exist, they're in place. We might as well just wait until the refinements that we know have to be made instead of next spring voting on individual articles, just take up the finished document. I just have not heard a good argument on why it must be approved tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Harris? So the phase two were substantive changes.
I think there's a misunderstanding. We may or may not be back next spring. If you approve this tonight, the likelihood is, we won't. This would then become our bylaw and we could work from that. Because we had to go backwards in order to correct this, we didn't have time to work on phase two things, so I'm not at all sure they're going to be ready for next spring at all. We'll have to see about that. Some might be, probably not. So it's a mistake to think we're going to be back in April. Definitely, we may not be. The next phase two is for substantive changes, it's not for reformatting and reorganizing.
Thank you. Vicky Lowell, precinct one, mother of the phone, the microphone carrier. Vicki Lowell, Precinct 1, mother of the phone, the microphone carrier. I hate to say how many years ago it was that I got my start in the planning field, trying to make the town bylaw conform to new state zoning enabling. And we stood before the town and told them what was substantive, what wasn't. And it was a total jumble then. We made it somewhat butter. Then we hired a consultant, Philip Hare, who we reformatted the bylaw. And since then, it's many, many changes because zoning is very complicated. If you made it really simple, it would be so arbitrary that people would hate it. By definition, it has to be complicated, but it's the only kind of regulation that that's complicated that comes before zoning, that comes before Town Meeting because that's what the state law requires. I think that we're lucky to have the Planning Board having and the working group come forward with this. It's a huge improvement. There's absolutely no real reason to wait. And I try, you know, over the time, I trust this Planning Board when they say it's not truly substantive. None of these things are truly substantive. But when you move things around, you could say, well, that's a little bit different, but certainly not the intent to change anything. And if we've had all these, we all know we have some eager Beaver lawyers that have looked at this and if they think it's good, it probably is good. I mean, it's, it just needs to be done and there's no reason to wait. And so I would ask, I hope my fellow Town Meeting members, well, two-thirds of us will vote to go ahead with this. Thank you.
Okay. There was someone right next to you there. Did I see a hand? Yep.
John Nolan, Precinct 1. My question is just the timeline approval. If we resubmit now, do we have to start the whole timeline all over again with the Attorney General's office? Will that kick us further down the road than if we just wait to get their approval on the initials of the middle?
Well, they have to review everything that we pass. Yeah. Go ahead.
I want to clarify a myth out there that's happening with this timeline for the approval. The AG's office is not, I don't expect them to issue a formal approval before this vote is taken. They're waiting for this vote to be taken so that they can address both last year's recodification where the notice didn't match what happened, where the warrant article language was a little off. And they're looking to take that together with this one and they will consider them both at the same time. I do not expect a formal notice of disapproval to come from the AG's office before a vote is taken.
Okay. Yep. Was there another hand on this side? Yes, the board.
Matt Patrick, Precinct 7. Some of you might remember that I was a selectman back in the 1990s. My biggest fear was that somebody would ask me a question about the zoning articles because I couldn't figure it out. When I got this most recent publication, I sat down and I wanted to figure out what my house, how my house was zoned, what I could do with some extra property. And I figured it out. It was all there. They did a good job at organizing it. As Ms. Lowell said, I think we can trust them moving forward and I think we should vote this and keep going. Move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I think we had one more behind you. I only allow move the question if it's the purpose of the rise. Yep. I think, was there one more behind him or are we all set? No, you're all set. Okay. Anything else? All right. The question will come on the main motion as printed. This requires a two-thirds, so I'm going to see if we have it on the voice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
To the chairs that the ayes have it by the two-thirds and I so declare.
Article 4, this is the capital budget.
Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the Article 4 as recommended.
As recommended, this is to appropriate, transfer and appropriate the sum of $7,157,018 from Certified Free Cash and $1,556,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the purposes of the capital budget. And we'll do a presentation first, any general questions, and then we'll go through section by section.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So before we get into the specifics of Article 4, I'd like to present an overview of the funding sources for all of the financial articles that are before Town Meeting tonight. This was suggested at a precinct meeting by Joe Neto and I thought it was a great suggestion. So to start with, the lion's share of the funding for this evening's warrant comes from free cash. The proposed spending amount shown here, $9.6 million, is the combined total for Articles 4, 5, 8, and 9. If the spending is approved, the balance remaining in free cash will be $5.6 million. This leaves a cushion to address potential spending needs that may arise between now and the April Town Meeting. And it's also important to maintain a significant balance in free cash to address unanticipated circumstances and ensure there are sufficient funds available to pay for capital needs in the following year. The next funding source is capital stabilization. $1,556,000 is requested from Capital Stabilization Fund for the fire ambulance and fire engine and Chief Smith will be speaking a little bit more about that in a moment. This leaves a balance of $4.6 million in the Capital Stabilization Fund, which is within the range established by Select Board Fiscal Policy. The next funding source is the overlay surplus, which is an account from which real estate tax abatements and exemptions are paid. $200,000 is requested from overlay surplus to pay for assessors' revaluation under Article 5 and that leaves a sufficient balance to cover anticipated abatements and exemptions in the year to come. The final funding source is raise and appropriate. Raise and appropriate is the technical term for general fund spending supported by the tax levy, local receipts, and available funds. This funding source comes from anticipated revenues, so there is no fund balance to report per se. The raise and appropriate amounts are found under Article 7, which contains three items to supplement the fiscal year '23 budget. This brings me to Article 4. Transitioning, Article 4 includes all capital items that do not require borrowing. The number that you'll see on page five of your booklets, beside each item is the page number on which you can find a detailed description of each item. The total requested under Article 4 is $8,713,018, which is somewhat more than the total amount approved in each of the prior two years. And Mr. Moderator, with your approval, I'd like to ask Chief Smith to be recognized to address two capital items.
Okay, Chief?
I assume the slides are locked up in here somewhere. All right. Thank you, Tim Smith, Fire Chief, Precinct 6. Just wanted to just give a little bit of a brief explanation on these next three slides regarding our requests. First, as you'll notice, we have in our proposal and our request, a fire engine and ambulance. And the engine right now has shown has an increased delivery date of 39 to 41 months. This has been problematic for us when we've been working with our vendors, but unfortunately, since we work very closely with both our apparatus and our ambulance vendors, the delivery times that we're discussing are reflective of worldwide manufacturing issues. And there's these delays that are created because of material availability, supply chain concerns, et cetera. This has been a moving target for us. It's been changing over the last several weeks, but right now, this is the best delivery date that we have for the apparatus. And if we act on it now, we can, we can get this contract settled with them by December 1st and we can keep this date as shown. The new ambulance is similar. Our vendor also has indicated that there may be an 18 to 24-month delivery time. This is obviously a little better and this is dependent on a couple of factors and one of them being chassis availability when we work with the vendor. And he's hopeful right now in the best-case scenario that we're going to still be able to maintain this 18 to 24-month window. With regards to our ambulances, as we move along in our services, our call volume increases and that has a dramatic effect on all of our equipment. And right now, ambulances have an anticipated useful life of about 10 years. And as you can see, the age of our ambulances are pretty good right now, they're young in age, with the exception of our reserve ambulance, which is kept at bay at the East Falmouth Station and it is all equipped and ready to be utilized in case of any maintenance issues or unforeseen mechanical issues with our current fleet. And again, we're looking right now at an ambulance that was ordered as a result of Town Meeting approval in 2021 and we anticipate that we're going to have that delivered as of 2023. And this allows us to rotate some of our ambulances. So we're expecting to rotate the oldest ambulance off of the line and then get the new one in service. And this is how we try and keep the activity down on our equipment. When we discuss our current fire apparatus, also, some of our apparatus is fairly new. In 2020, Town Meeting approved a fire engine for us and that is currently also in production. Our anticipated delivery of that is 2023. And as you can see, right now, we have a reserve engine that was purchased, the used vehicle, and it's a 2006. And then we also have in service one of our oldest vehicles. It's 26 years in age. And then we have two of the engines that are 2009 and those are aged. We anticipate with the building or the production of the ambulance, the engine that we're requesting tonight, that the age is going to, right now at 13 years, will move into 20, into 16. And why I say that is because fire engines have a different longevity lifespan. They're very complex machines. They're built very well, but they have a life expectancy as well. At 15 years, we try and place them in reserves so that we can continue to maintain them a little further and keep them in service. But at 25 years, they're deemed to be, considered to be taken out of service. And that's because at that point, a lot of the safety equipment and safety and technology that was available 25 years previously are no longer available and it's time for us to move along. So in that vein, we're asking for your support for both the engine and the ambulance. It'll continue to allow us to do our mission in the community. It allows us to have our personnel work safely and provide the fire and EMS services that we do on a daily basis. We've been very fortunate that we have a good maintenance division and they've done a lot of work to maintain these vehicles and we've been able to keep them a little further on in life. Our personnel are very good stewards of taking care of this equipment and our staff works very diligently to oversee this capital planning timeline. And we feel that this is the opportunity for us right now to keep our apparatus moving as far as replacements are concerned. So, thank you. And I ask for your support.
Okay, any general questions before we get into line items about capital funding or budget? Yep. Mr. Goldson?
Mr. Moderator, we did work out a system. You have me until the break and then we're going to switch.
The break, yes, thank you. Better management. Good job.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I actually have a question to Mr. Johnson Staub. The $1.5 million out of capital stabilization is, is the purpose of capital stabilization to, or I should say, isn't the purpose of capital stabilization to address the lean years and stabilize from the richer years our capital expenditures? And have we not had a couple of pretty good years in tax receipts? And do we anticipate a downturn in the economy and a possible lower receipt? Does that make any sense?
So the, I would, I would describe the purpose of the capital stabilization more broadly. Certainly, one use would be if there is a lean year and you don't have sufficient free cash to support your most pressing equipment and other capital needs for a particular year, that is a valid purpose, a valid use of the capital stabilization fund. But it is also used, has been used in the past and I believe should be used in the future to address items that are simply larger, you know? And the fire engine and ambulance combination really fit that quite well. They're larger than your typical item when you look at them combined. The other important way to look at this is, there is a point at which you have too much money in capital stabilization, right? You know, we're always, in fiscal planning, we're trying to strike a balance. We want to have sufficient reserves so that we're stable and we're sustainable and we have some cushion for downturns, but not so much that you're sitting on the taxpayers' money and not putting it to good use. And in this specific case, we have a fiscal policy that says the amount, the balance in that capital stabilization should be 2% to 5% of the operating budget. And if we don't appropriate any money out of capital stabilization this year, we will actually be in excess of that $5 million figure. With the proposed capital spending, we'll be right within that 2% to 5% range and still actually toward the higher end of it.
Any other general questions before line items? Yep, I see a hand back there to my right. Ms. Alwatt?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson Staub for that presentation. It makes it much clearer for Town Meeting members when we're voting articles where the funding is coming from and why. And as a follow-up to the last speaker, I was going to stand and speak and ask the same Is there a specific reason that we want to hold out on the five, almost $5.6 million in free cash? Because that's just going to fall to free cash at the end of the year. And I'm thinking the same way that our savings accounts, we should be building them up, maybe adding to them and for specific use in the future and using the free cash now while we have it. So if someone could answer why we're dipping into our savings as opposed to using our free cash specifically, that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson's up.
So with, with free cash, again, there is a, there's a fiscal policy that relates to this. It's not, it's not isolated to free cash, but it relates to the undesignated fund balance. And as I'm sure the prior speaker is aware, given her accounting background, the undesignated fund balance is a factor of all of the uncommitted funds, including free cash. And with respect to that policy, we, we're right in the range of what the board's adopted fiscal policy states in terms of where those undesignated fund balances should be. And in terms of leaving a balance of $5 million in free cash, we are, you know, we have an April Town Meeting that we will likely be looking to spend some money for on a planned basis, but also, we'd like to leave a significant balance there for unforeseen circumstances that, that we just don't anticipate. So in totality, we feel that this is the right balance. We're putting money into capital stabilization every year and the whole idea of it is, every year with recurring revenues, you put money in and you take money out based on the need and based on timing and within the balances, the target, target balances under the fiscal policy. So I guess that's the best way I can explain it.
Okay, let's do information technology.
Dave Chevoyer, precinct five. Servers are expensive and we should be kept up to date. $250 is a reasonable amount for new servers. They usually have a shelf life, four to six years of usability. I'm curious if the town has looked into moving to cloud services and virtualized servers, you know, AWS, Google Cloud, ones like those. It's much, it can be much cheaper to put your services up on those. You don't have to maintain physical boxes, worry about the hardware, and it could be a cost saving. So I'm just wondering if the town had looked into that rather than buying new physical boxes.
Madam Moderator, if we could have IT Director Don Lewis address that question, please.
Yes, we have looked into, we began looking into, looking into cloud-based services, but there's security concerns that we need to address, and we haven't fully investigated all that just yet.
Anything else with information technology? Public safety?
Mark Mancini, precinct eight. I just had a, I think I want to put amendment for the accident reconstruction equipment, and I want to amend that down to zero, and I'll explain why in a minute.
Okay, an amendment to remove the accident reconstruction equipment? Okay, go ahead.
I spent five years at Barnstable County Sheriff's Office crime scene. I go to car crashes across the Cape every week, and accident recon isn't something you can just take up. And Falmouth has recently trained two new officers, or two officers to accident recon, but it's a very perishable skill. You have to do it all the time, or you lose it. So spending this money to buy equipment with officers who don't have any mentorship or any continual training that everywhere else in the Cape they get is just a waste of money. The other 14 towns on Cape Cod are part of the Cape Cod Regional Law Enforcement Council, and they have a crash recon team. They come out. Perfect example, last Tuesday, I don't know if anyone drove by Crab Apples around 3:00, there was a really bad car crash there. There was no crash recon done on that crash because Falmouth doesn't have the ability to do it, and just buying the equipment isn't going to give them the ability to do it. Yesterday, I went to a crash down in Provincetown, and it was during like the monsoon that we had, and their crash recon guy in Provincetown, though trained and able, didn't have a lot of experience in the rain. So they called that crash recon team down, a Harwich officer came, and they did appropriate crash recon. Without being part of that regional law enforcement council, our officers are being given equipment that they'll never be properly trained to use, they won't have mentorship to be able to do it, and they will not have the continuing education that they need. And I ask for your support in my amendment that either join the regional law enforcement council or don't waste our money.
Okay, discussion on the amendment. Mr. Moderator? Oh, he's up top, okay. I'm looking down here for department heads, yeah. Chief?
Edward Dunn, Police Chief, precinct eight. As far as this equipment, as we've put in the explanation on page, what page is it on? You'll see that Falmouth has had a lot of serious accidents, and last week, there was one in front of Crab Apples, and we relied on the state police to come down. However, the state police will no longer come down on serious accidents, they'll only come for fatals. And what's happening is, a lot of these serious accidents eventually turn into fatals. We do have a total of four officers that are trained in accident recon. We've just trained two new ones. We sent them, they were online training, and then they spent two weeks in Connecticut for actual on-scene crash recon. The equipment, we have equipment, but it's outdated, the software no longer works, and this request is to get new software so that our team of four officers will be able to do these accidents. And like I said, a lot of times, it's a serious accident, and then it turns into a fatal, we don't know. People are usually sent off to trauma centers and then later die. We usually go out and mark the scene, and then the state police comes in and will assist us in recreating the scene, but it's too late, we lose evidence and everything else. So I am requesting that you keep the $30,000 in there so we can buy this new equipment so that we can do our job correctly.
Do you want to speak, the gentleman standing in the balcony? No, okay. Anyone else on the floor? Back left?
Rich Bradley, precinct seven. My question to the chief is if these other resources are available of this regional team, and I think the regional team includes, I don't know, he would be able to tell us better, but I think it includes the SRT or the SWAT team guys, a motorcycle team, I think, which allows, would allow Falmouth to use those other towns to help out when we need resources for the road race or whatever it is. Like I said, the SRT team or the SWAT team, this accident thing, and the previous speaker stated that these new officers need mentors, and so if they were involved with that team, there's several qualified people that could help them figure out how to use that equipment. But I don't think we need to buy that equipment if the team already has it. We should be utilizing this resource by being a member of this team to allow our officers some advancement in their careers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As far as mentoring, we do have two senior officers, one's a lieutenant and the other one's a patrolman, who have been on our accident recon team for years. Falmouth is large enough, and Falmouth has enough accidents, sad to say, that we should be taking care of our own investigations. We have used the regional team when necessary, but again, they're not always available either because of, they recovered the entire Cape Cod. And Falmouth being 44 square miles, and like I say, with the data that's on that page, the number of fatal accidents, pedestrian accidents that happen, even the, just the minor ones can be investigated correctly and properly so that we can move forward if we need to charge somebody or be prepared for court. So again, I am requesting that money so that our team can continue to serve this town correctly.
Okay, the question will come on the amendment to remove the accident reconstruction equipment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. As per the chairs, that the noes have it by a majority. Anything else under public safety? Marine and Environmental Services. Back right?
Richard Dubey, precinct six. Under shotguns, they are listed as less lethal weapons and referenced several times as less lethal shotguns. They are Mossberg 590A1s. From Mossberg's own website, the 590A1 is listed as follows. The 590A1 is a purpose-built combat shotgun, and as such, it excels in close-quarter combat. I won't go on with the rest of what it states about it, but I'd like to ask the chief, seeing as he's here, if this is the gun that we are purchasing, what makes it a less lethal weapon? I understand the round, the beanbag round, is a less lethal round, but if we are buying Mossberg 590A1s, they are lethal weapons, and will we also be issuing each officer active 12-gauge rounds along with beanbag rounds? Thank you.
Chief?
Mr. Moderator, if you can, I'm gonna have Sergeant Ben Guthrie speak on all this. He is my firearms instructor and expert in the police department.
Sure. Sergeant Guthrie.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Ben Guthrie, Sergeant, Falmouth Police. I am the lead firearms instructor for our department, as well as a firearm instructor for the state. These shotguns, the question was, how are we designating them as less lethal? Or are we designating them as less lethal? Or are we going to have lethal shotguns in the cruisers? No, we will not have lethal shotguns in the cruisers. There will be lethal shotguns for our special response team. They are the only ones who will be utilizing the shotguns as lethal shotguns. And even then, they have to be trained in it to be able to use it. The shotguns that we're looking to replace right now are all the ones that are in the cruisers. We do not have any training shotguns. The ones that are all in the cruiser right now are outfitted with orange hardware, which designate them as less lethal, so that when we pull them out and we have to use them, everyone can see that they are orange, and they have written on them "less lethal" on the stocks. Also, the foreends that we're looking to purchase are orange, and they have a light and laser built into them so that it'll ensure accuracy, and it'll also help in low-light conditions. We do not issue 12-gauge shotgun ammunition to our officers for patrol use. There is only beanbag, 12-gauge beanbag rounds kept with the beanbag shotguns. There is never lethal ammunition kept with the beanbag, less lethal ammunition with the shotguns. There's only beanbag rounds for these guns.
Okay, Mr. Dubey?
I would just, for clarification purposes, ask Sergeant Guthrie, besides orange stocks or other orange designation on the gun, what makes it less lethal?
The ammunition that it's firing, beanbags.
Not to go around, but the weapon itself is a lethal weapon, regardless of what color it is, it's a lethal weapon. I understand you're only issuing beanbag rounds to patrol, but the wording that you have here in the warrant book is stating that the weapons themselves are less lethal. Now, would you agree with me that the weapons themselves are lethal weapons?
Yes, they're lethal weapons being used as less lethal weapons.
Okay, anything else under public safety?
Thank you. Herb Luther, precinct seven. I want to speak for a moment on the Red Brook Reservoir culvert replacement item. I live right at the shore, what used to be the shore of the Red Brook Pond. It disappeared over two and a half years, almost two and a half years ago.
Okay, whoa, 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 so we're under public safety.
Oh, I thought you had moved ahead.
Well, I was trying to go ahead one, but you went ahead two.
I'll wait.
But we'll get to them quick. Anybody want to talk about Marine and Environmental Services? Okay, Community Services, Mr. Luther. Community Development.
Thank you. Back to this item, it's $61,000 for design and permitting on the replacement of the culvert that has failed at Red Brook Road where the pond used to be. This is the first item that we have seen since that occurred that will lead to things that need to happen. Then, the engineering study definitely pointed out the need for replacing the culvert and the associated road area. There will be more visits to this group from the DPW later on in time for construction costs and et cetera, et cetera. The process will go on. I would like to state on behalf of my actual neighbors along the shores of what used to be the Red Brook Pond, that we simply want an ultimate goal to develop of, we simply want our pond back as this process completes itself. And we'd like to hear frequently from the Conservation Commission and the DPW as to what the overall process looks like and how it's progressing. Thank you.
Waste water? Engineering administration?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gina Weber, precinct nine. I just had a question. If you look on page 18, under the Engineering and Admin, it's probably the third from the last item, the Worcester Court and Springbars Road traffic improvements for $150,000 was denied. I would just like clarification on the reasoning.
I think Peter McConerty may have some information from the dialogue with prior finance director on that. Mr. McConerty?
Yeah, Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. I believe that project right now is still being worked through the process, so that's why the request for the funding is not in there at this time. Will be coming at a later date.
And the center section on the back?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Cap, precinct three. Mobile infrastructure for a quarter of a million dollars, and on the explanation, page 78, it's under maintenance. What are we doing for a quarter of a million dollars?
This is actually a mobile repeater system that will allow for mobile phones to be used in the buildings, and this is actually for emergency situations. So the high school is used for a shelter, and if we would ever have an emergency drill during the school day, we would be unable to contact the staff in the building because you can't use your mobile phones. The service right now that we use during, with our drills, is Navigate, and Navigate is used off of mobile phones. So in order to practice our drills, to be able to be prepared in case there were an emergency, an intruder in the building, we want to make sure that we have the best service to be able to reach every staff member. So it's twofold, it's one for the community, as used for a shelter, you do not receive, you can't talk on the phone. Sometimes you can get text, but it's really the phone service. So that's the purpose of this.
Okay, anything else under the School Department? Mr. Letterman? Nope. Okay, the question will come on the main motion, as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? All those opposed, no. The chairs of the ayes have it by a two-thirds majority, and I so declare. Article 5, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 5 as recommended.
As recommended. This is $1,770,069 from Certified Free Cash, and $200,000 from the overlay surplus, and $50,000 from the embarkation fund for the purposes of the non-capital budget. We're going to go by section. Assessors' section. General Government. Marine and Environmental Services. Community Development. Engineering Admin. Recreation. Oh, over here on the right. Ms. Whitehead?
Sorry.
Oh, I got two on the right. Okay, sorry.
Lynn Whitehead, Precinct 1. I'm curious why we're, again, doing, it's not even a turf field we're asking for, it's actually an artificial turf. We went through this with a high school field, and there's so much information now, even this year, with all the research that's been doing, that's been done researching what is in that turf when you use the artificial. I have some of these listed. This is from September 30th, from The Guardian, but The New York Times, there've been several newspapers across the country. Anyway, let me just list a couple of these. I'll be very quick, quickly, I hope. The EPA is testing, and they found that the material in artificial turf contains high levels of dangerous PFAC chemicals, including lead, arsenic, cadmium, phenothiazole, and hexidine, chromium, other heavy metals, and silica, which is classified as a hazardous material by OSHA. When exposed to sunlight, the compounds become dangerously heated and release various types of dust and gases which players breathe in. Also, along with the high temperatures, the freezing and thawing adds to the breakdown of the chemicals. These turf fields age with infill material, crumbs or pellets used to hold up this plastic grass, which then becomes tightly packed together. This makes the grass dangerously hard. The result is that the likelihood of severe concussions and joint injuries, including ACL tears, occurs. These injuries are more common on artificial turf compared to natural grass. The EPA initially promoted this product as a way to confront a waste tire disposal crisis. By 2015, faced with a cancer cluster and under congressional investigation, the agencies no longer claimed artificial turf to be safe. There are more and more cities and towns across the country banning this turf. Boston and Amherst are only a few, which are a bit close to us. In addition, the National Football League players are pressing the league to ban artificial turf because of the injuries, and the U.S. national soccer teams also will only play on natural grass for the same reason. Spending $100,000 and then another $160,000 for unsafe fields is not a good idea. So I'd really like to turn this down and look to real grass, which is another problem, but at least it saves lives. Thank you.
Ms. Whitehead?
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melissa Freitag, Precinct 6. Speaking to the same issue as Ms. Whitehead just did. Thank you for that prelude, Ms. Whitehead. I would like to amend this and actually strike the line, turf field design and engineering for $100,000. And eliminate the line item, please.
Okay, we have an amendment to remove the turf field.
And I have several reasons for it, and I'm sure there are many more, but I'll briefly express a few of them. A quick list is that we know that PFAS are known carcinogens, as Ms. Whitehead just explained. So we're dealing with known dangerous chemicals. Communities are now trending away from building turf fields. I know that we just did one in Falmouth, but they're trending away, including Martha's Vineyard. Martha's Vineyard Planning Commission just banned them, and as she mentioned, as the prior speaker spoke, we're dealing with, Boston has banned them, as have Sharon Concord and Wayland, at least. So maybe our neighbors know a little something about this that we don't know. Thirdly, the description on page 72 is seemingly, it's kind of disingenuous, because it makes it sound like we're actually building more grass fields. It says, you know, we're going to, the request is for funds to estimate, I'm on page 72. The request for the funds to estimate the cost of prepping, installing, and future maintenance of possible lighting for a turf field, turf, of course, we all received a letter from some residents in Precincts 2 and 6 the other day, defining how Webster defined turf. But it says this field will help to reduce use of the other two grass fields at Trotting Park. Mentioning the other two grass fields suggests that this field is going to be a grass field, although it says it's a turf field, so why isn't the word "artificial" there in front of it? And then also, if you look at the Excel sheet next to the description, you know, we're supposed to be allocating $100,000 for design and engineering of this field, but the line item above it is planning and study. And I don't believe we've ever done a planning and study for this particular area. It may even be more appropriate to fund $100,000 to do a planning and study for this, as opposed to getting right into the design phase. To quote Ms. Harris and the zoning articles that we just planned, perhaps we can have text in the future that provides clarity, specificity, and structure. And then lastly, I'd like to point out that even just on Friday, in the enterprise, page 3, any of you who saw it, joint base cleanup of large PFAS plume. Okay, Falmouth has a lot of history with PFAS plumes from the base, and it just doesn't seem to make sense for us to be putting more dangerous chemicals onto the ground, into the ground, onto our children, into their lungs, into their shoes, into their cuts, when the world is trying to turn away from this. So I hope that people will support striking this $100,000 appropriation into designing something that we haven't even planned yet. Thank you.
Discussion open on the amendment. Mr. Latimer.
Thank you, Richard Latimer, Precinct 1. You may recall, when the discussion was on the high school field, I was strongly opposed to putting turf on that field for these very reasons. The evidence against turf fields at that time was not as strong as it is now. I think it would be the height of irresponsibility to spend $100,000, given what we now know about both environmental and safety problems. My concern a few years back was mostly safety and issues of sports competitiveness, which are relatively minor. Sports competitiveness is, but the issues of safety and environmental pollution, basically, I think far outweighs any perceived advantage in having a faster field for our kids to play on, especially if it's going to lead to increased injuries and perhaps even, you know, cancers or illnesses, because we just don't know. It's reckless to go spending this kind of money. And then, the next time this comes up, we'll do another $100,000 for more. I will strongly support indefinite postponement of this article.
Mr. Goldstone?
Jed Goldstone, Precinct 2. Just to give a quick background, I am a soccer coach, occasional soccer coach. I'm a soccer referee. I have three boys playing soccer. I am also an aquatic toxicologist, and I spent nine years on the Board of Health. So I've actually looked carefully at turf fields. One of the reasons that this, I guess it's capital piece, has brought to us is the fact that a number of years ago, this town meeting funded a study to look at the athletic fields in town and for the recreation. And the conclusion of that study was at the time, we needed either nine new grass fields to meet the demand, or three artificial turf fields. And the reasoning was that the artificial turf fields can be used approximately three times as heavily as the grass fields. So we have one turf field, which I imagine somebody from the school administration or a parent of a current player can attest the fact, is used pretty heavily and used pretty effectively. One thing that I want to correct the misapprehension is that we do not use crumb rubber. We did not. We explicitly did not use crumb rubber, which is the tire, crushed-up tires, and is the source of most of the, if not all, of the metals and the zinc and most of the toxic compounds. And Martha's Vineyard actually addressed this when they used, they actually looked at the samples of current artificial turf and found that most of the chemicals that they were analyzing, such as arsenic, were actually lower than the referenced soils in, on Cape Cod and in Massachusetts. So for most of the compounds that were looked at, it's probably not an issue. However, as been raised, is the concern with what are called the perfluorinated compounds, not just PFAS and PFOS, which are the primary pollutants that were observed, are observed underneath Falmouth, coming from, not only from the base, but also from spills at Otis Rotary. And they are not deliberately included, for the most part, in the production of the artificial turf. They're used in the production of the grass, the artificial grass. And so the question is actually quite relevant as to whether or not we do want to put something that has perfluorinated compounds into Falmouth. And I actually agree that we should not, because we have already large plumes coming from the base. What is, at this point, actually, the question is, are there any materials that don't have this perfluorinated compounds? And the answer is, we don't know. That it would be, that it's a question that needs somebody to spend the money to go and look for it and ask for it. And until we ask for something, we don't, and look for it, we don't even know whether something like that exists. So there is specific need identified in a funded study for more field space. And we can create, find a space to create three grass fields, or more grass fields, or we can actually look for a space that we can put an artificial field and look for materials that may not only be less toxic.
Okay, Mr. Goldstone, your four minutes is up.
Okay.
Mr. Bushy?
Thank you.
I'm Tom Bushy, I'm the, well, sorry, I'm from Precinct 7, and I'm speaking as a parent and an educator, and I'm asking you, please not strike this. I don't have the scientific information that some of the former speakers presented, but I will say that these kids need opportunities to move as much as possible. And whenever there's rain or it's wet, there's a cancellation, they can't keep up with the field maintenance, it's not an opportunity for the kids to get out and play sports. It's an opportunity for them to sit down on the couch, watch TV, go on social media, what have you. And Mr. Olenek has worked hard with the rec crew to look into more opportunities for kids here. I'm in support of it. I've got three kids that are school-aged. They play on the turf field at the high school, and they have great experience there. I would encourage anyone who's not done this to just sign up for the alerts from the rec department for when there are cancellations, to see how many times the kids are not able to play. And I think you'd be surprised to see how much it happens, how regularly it happens. And again, please don't strike this. I see this as an opportunity for kids to move, to play, to socialize, to problem-solve, and to do a number of things that they learn to do while they're playing sports and engaging with their peers. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Keith?
Melissa Keith, Precinct 4. I am a school committee member, however, I am not speaking on behalf of the school committee. I happen to be a mom, first and foremost, and I have an up-and-coming field hockey player. And I think it was around just before COVID, when the multipurpose turf field was made available to the younger crowd. And the first thing she said when she came off the field after her first Saturday in the spring was, that was the best experience I've had, playing the sport that I truly am enamored with. And then, in the beginning, it was kind of flipping-flopping, you know, they went back to the grass field, and then they went back to the turf field. And every time I drove her, or my husband drove her on a Saturday, she would cross her fingers and hope that she could play on the turf field, because the grass field just was full of ruts, and it wasn't consistent. And she didn't, the ball wasn't going the way the kids wanted it to go, and what have you. I too am asking you to not strike this. I think that we should use $100,000 to perhaps look for things that have less toxins in them, but it really does give kids opportunities to move. These kids have to get out. If we're going to strike the $100,000, as Ms. Freitag suggested, perhaps we could add however much more it's going to cost the town to increase the DPW employees to fund the additional fields it will need to balance out not having a turf field. But then again, we can't rely on Mother Nature either, so there's that to think about as well. So I strongly encourage you not to vote this down. Thanks.
Mr. Netto?
Joe Netto, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, I have a question for the school superintendent.
Go ahead.
My question is, the town has put a turf field, AstroTurf Field, at the high school. How much of the, how much use does that field get, not only by the school department, but is that field available for the recreation department? As a former coach, I know who plays on what field somewhat most of the seasons, and when, I think the sport, the recreation department is looking forward to soccer and girls field hockey. Obviously, field hockey is played in the fall when football is played, but soccer's a year-round sport. And in the summertime, is that field available for the rec department to use? Because I know the school department likes to think it's there, so to speak, but I think it belongs to the taxpayers of the town of Falmouth, like all the property in the town, and... And how much use?
Okay, Dr. Doer?
Is that getting?
One of the best features of the all-purpose field is the accessibility. We have several teams that play. We have boys' soccer, girls' soccer, field hockey, and the football team, the band practice, practices and plays on the field. So they practice, they play their games. We don't miss because of rain, so the kids get the use out of the field. The days of the grass fields, you wouldn't be able to be on them, so you would have to find other fields to practice on because you couldn't, you had to wait till the game day for football. So it does get a lot of use. It is open to the rec center. When it's not in use for the schools, and we've also have a process that any organization could rent out the field as well. So it is available. While I'm here, you want me to? So this was brought to my attention yesterday, and so I went through some information. And October of 2019, Sprint Turf, which is the company that put in our turf field at the high school, it says no PFAS chemicals are used in turf manufactured by Sprint Turf. It goes on to say that they actually had it tested, just to be sure. And then the CDM confirmed today through an email that they specifically used virgin material and not the crumb rubber that was mentioned earlier. So that, just want to specify that that's the information I found today.
Okay. Yep, Mr. Parker?
Who are you looking at?
Yep, Baker.
You're pointing to me or somebody else?
No, no, to the right. Unless, did you have your hand up too? Oh, I'll add you to the list. I didn't see you. Sorry.
Bob Baker, Precinct 4. I understand all these arguments. I was a collegiate athlete who played on grass field, which now is a turf field. My alma mater has a history of over 100 years of football on grass fields. In October, I went to Homecoming for the dedication and opening of their brand-new turf field, and it does change the whole game. Grass has this wonderful appeal, if you'll take a look at Fenway Park, but there's no way any town can maintain grass fields. You won't get any more of the use out of it, and all you need is a couple of rainstorms and the wrong people on the field. And you, sometimes you can't keep kids off the field who aren't on a team, and then you have just mud. So I know there are concerns, but a lot of them have been, you know, met by new technologies, and we can somewhat limit or take a very good look at what they're putting in. But I think you're going to get an awful lot more use and a lot more bang for your buck with an artificial field. Thank you.
Dr. Antonucci?
Yeah, Bobby Antonucci, Precinct 6. I was very instrumental in getting support for the high school turf field with the vote in the town. I also was president of Fishburg State University, and we put two artificial turf fields in. The second one's being installed right now as I speak. We've checked all of the health and safety issues, and I need to tell you, they're safe. I have five grandchildren, and I never would put on a field if it wasn't safe. We can find every article that says the field isn't any good. We can find articles that say they are good. I think we have to go by our experience. We did a good job of that field at the high school, it's been proven. We've had less injuries, we've had more participation in the community at large, from Pawpawna football, from baseball, every kind of activity uses it. I think we have to give the recreation department the opportunity to explore, to investigate, come back to us with a proposal. It's not cheap, I'm going to tell you, it's not cheap at all. But spending $100,000 to do it right is what we should do. So I hope we would defeat the move to delete that item and then vote the whole article and come back and not deal with the field. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to say that, you know, we hear the concerns about the potential health and environmental impacts loud and clear, and if Town Meeting sees its way to defeat the amendment and approve the design funds, we will absolutely work with the engineer and the designer to look for the best available technology and enlist folks like Mr. Goldstone, if he's willing, to evaluate the materials that are available for new fields so that we might come back with a proposal and have the best available information and the best technology that minimizes any environmental concerns.
Okay, the question will come on the amendment to remove the line item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's in the chairs, let the noes have it by a majority. Anything else under recreation? Beaches? The question will, yep, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gina Weber, Precinct 9. Sorry, my question was under the recreation still. Sorry, I lost my page. Sorry about that. I just had a question about the pickleball courts. I know, I'm not popular right now. So Trotting Park, my kids have played soccer, they've played a million sports down there. That parking lot, if anyone has been there on a Saturday afternoon with your kids, it is nearly impossible to find space. Very concerned about the location for that particular article, in addition to the cost.
Mr. Olenek?
Joel Olenek, Recreation Director, Precinct 3. As you saw earlier, we did have a $55,000 request for the parking lot at Trotting Park, just to be used to help expand the parking lot, put some lines down, to get as much parking in there as physically possible. As we understand your question about that, as a few weeks ago, we did have somebody park in front of and behind another vehicle there, so that person was locked in and couldn't get out. So we see the questions, and we definitely will address that in the, in the design and engineering of the pickleball courts.
Okay, anything else under pickleball courts? Yep, to the left.
Amy Leonardi, Precinct 8. Joe, just a quick follow-up to that. How many spots would you anticipate adding to that parking lot? Because as Gina noted, and you know, that is a jam-packed lot as-is, so to add all those pickleball courts, I can't even imagine, you'd have to add another 50 to 100 parking spots.
Yeah, right now, I don't even know how many spots we have in there because, again, people park everywhere. I mean, we'll definitely try to get as many as we can. But going from that, I do not know what the lot number is right now. But we will definitely try to increase it by at least a third.
Okay, the question will come on the main motion, as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority, and we'll stand in a 15-minute recess.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
See Joseph Parish of Falmouth provides a place to worship God and refresh your spirit with others. Here are some of our upcoming events.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Since 1971, Sea Education Association has been inspiring ocean scholars, stewards, and leaders at sea and on our Woods Hole campus with programs for college, gap, and high school students. More information at se.edu. Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work, for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson, LLP, have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design, 508-540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly-added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Lisa Peterson, Azendorf, William Ravis Real Estate Mortgage Insurance.
Grossi Septic Solutions.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lampard Repair Shop.
Every lighthouse needs a keeper. FriendsofNobsko.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, 2 Water Street, Woods Hole.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions. 781-930-5000.
Wacoite Congregational Church.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery.
M. Duffney Builders.
Neighborhood Falmouth.
Danny's Barber Shop.
David Rogers Electric. 508-274-
508-274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations.
Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth.
Mahoney's Garden Center.
The Cape Cod Five.
At Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers, Windfall, Walmart.
Okay, all town meeting members, please come forward, take your seats so that we can reestablish the quorum. All town meeting members, please come forward, take your seats so we can reestablish the quorum. Okay, let's reestablish the quorum. We're on Article Six.
I'm telling him he said hello. Yeah, 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 yeah. We'll see. I can't wait to hear him.
Okay, folks, come on forward, let's reestablish the quorum. Okay, let's reestablish the quorum. Okay, all town meeting members, please come forward to reestablish the quorum. We're going old-school. Joe Netto is the teller in the First Division. Bob Antonucci is the teller in the Second Division. Sandy Cuney will be the teller in the Third Division. All town meeting members present, please rise for the establishment of the quorum and the tellers are returned accountable. Eighty-one in the Second Division. Fifty-seven in the Third Division. The First Division. Forty-seven. By a counted vote of 185, we have a quorum and we're back in session. Article Six. This is the select board for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Six as printed.
Okay, this is to authorize the Select Board to petition the Massachusetts General Court for a special act to remove all personnel of the Falmouth Fire Department, including the chief, from civil service. Discussion on Article Six. Here, yep, to the left.
Dave Chevry, Precinct Five. I'm just curious, now that it has been removed for police, if it has been easier to hire and those things came true?
The police bill hasn't passed the legislature yet.
Oh, okay.
Still in process.
No question.
Okay, any further discussion? If there are any other questions, we'll come on the main motion as recommended. Nope, we got one on the right.
Where are you?
Stand, yeah, stand up so she can see, please.
Hi, Tracy Waggett, Precinct Nine. I just have a question about if there's already a procedure in place for testing if they're removed from this. It says that other towns that are not part of the civil service have their own tests. So do we have something in place before we remove them?
Sir Johnson's up.
So, as the Speaker said, there are firms out there that other towns that are not in civil service contract with to conduct those tests, and those have stood up and performed well. There are many towns that are, were either never in civil service or have removed, and they have had greater success in hiring and having a professional, qualified process to hire local people and more flexibility to recruit diverse workforce and to move quickly.
Okay, anything else on Article Six? Question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article Seven, Finance Committee for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Seven as recommended.
As recommended, this is to raise and appropriate the following amounts in the three categories: long-term unexcluded debt interest payments, long-term unexcluded debt principal payments, and school department wages. Discussion on Article Seven. Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article Eight, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Eight as recommended.
As recommended, this is to transfer and appropriate $235,000 from Certified Free Cash to the Reserve Fund. Discussion on Article Eight. Question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article Nine, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. Mr. Moderator, I move Article Nine as printed.
Okay, this is to transfer and appropriate the following amounts from Certified Free Cash for the Zoning Board of Appeals temporary wages, Fire Department additional gross overtime, Fire Department staff development, and Personnel Department wages for new hire bonuses. Discussion on Article Nine. Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article Ten. Article Ten, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is indefinite postponement. Would someone like to make a positive motion on the floor, Ms. Lichtenstein?
Lesley Lichtenstein, Precinct Eight. I move that the town vote to appropriate $7,300 from Certified Free Cash for the Falmouth Cultural Council for qualified grants and activities, set some to be expended under the jurisdiction of the town manager. We should have a slide that says that, no? I thought we did.
There we go, it's right there.
There it is. Thank you.
This is the main motion on Article Ten. Ms. Kuchimba.
Thank you. I'm Alice Kuchimba. I'm the current Chair of the Falmouth Cultural Council, and I live in North Falmouth, Precinct Five. I'm just gonna read it again because it's new language and it's not in the warrant. That the town vote to appropriate $7,300 from Certified Free Cash for the Falmouth Cultural Council for qualified grants and activities, set some to be expended under the jurisdiction of the town manager, which I think addresses some of the concerns that the Finance Committee had. I'm gonna try to work the clicker. This is the hard part. Thank you. Falmouth would not be the first on Cape Cod to appropriate town funds. Provincetown and Wellfleet Town Meetings have approved additional funds for their cultural councils. And Provincetown, on April 4th of this year, doubled the allocation from the Mass Cultural Council. I'll tell you about Wellfleet in a second. What Bill Burton, the Provincetown Cultural Council Chair, said: "I would encourage any local cultural council to approach their governing body on this. We are very excited that this coming year, we will be able to support more individuals and organizations than ever before, and Falmouth would like to share in that excitement." In terms of Wellfleet, I put a call in to the co-chair. For the past 10 years, they've been part of the annual town budget. And G.G., whose last name I'm forgetting, said to make sure to mention that both Wellfleet and Provincetown have realized that enhancing arts funding actually helps the tourism economy. And Falmouth, different than the outer Cape Towns, has a robust year-round population. So our cultural council needs to both pay attention to funds that increase the attractions for tourists and seasonal residents, as well as our year-round populations. Now, here's a program I think you might all know about. It's Arts Falmouth, which is a nonprofit that really hosts three amazing events. Arts Alive, which was this past June, and if you look at the crowds, what you'll see is that people were really yearning and longing, excuse me, to come together to celebrate the arts. There was dance, music, an Arts and Crafts Fair. It's a, it's a three-day event that really, also, people shopped the businesses on Main Street, ate out. There wasn't a parking space to be found in the whole town, I know because I looked, and this event is free. And if you look carefully at the smaller image, which was the first Juneteenth celebration, which was part of Arts Alive, in the middle, you'll see somebody in uniform that you might recognize as the town manager. I looked specifically for that, for you.
Got a promotion.
Yes, you did. You know, you're up from private, right? So I just wanted to say, the Falmouth Cultural Council does a yearly community survey, and every year, we learn what the community wants, and that informs our funding priorities. This year, and it mirrors what the superintendent says, in addition to people wanting live, local events, they want them to be free and low-cost. People are concerned about income inequality, and they're concerned about diversity in programming and inclusion. So I am going to say, Arts Falmouth has done a terrific job in bringing this community together. So here's another, this was a new event, new applicant, new event, and one of our priorities is to really do a grant-writing workshop and really help people who've never written grants, and people who have ideas and want to promote a new program. In North Falmouth, Capabilities has opened a daycare center in North Falmouth, and Cape Cod Rocks, you have to say it again, Cape Cod Rocks, a collaboration between the North Falmouth Village Association and Capabilities. This project celebrates the history and significance of pink granite to the Cape. And I'm sure the moderator knows about the significance of pink granite to the Cape, about JFK's memorial made of pink granite that's native to Cape Cod. The Capabilities workers make magnets and pushpins to be sold at Capabilities Farms. And this was a new collaboration, and we were very glad that we were able to fund it. The next slide is by an individual artist, expressive arts therapist, Rachel Youngling, and it's called Musical Discoveries for Families Who Serve. This was also a new applicant, by an individual, not by a nonprofit. And look at that child. All I'm gonna say to you is, fund the joy. I mean, how can you not fund the joy? This expressive arts program brings a musically-rich curriculum and experience to children and families, including, of course, Falmouth military families, served by the U.S. Coast Guard Child Development Center. And we were very happy to be able to fund this, which had not been, we had not funded anything for military families before. Rise and Shine. I just want you to look at that image for a second. This is like a self-portrait. This is, Rise and Shine is a program, a Cape-wide program. They only ask for a little bit of money for each of the Cape Towns. It engages at-risk youth and young adults in the visual performing and literary arts to provide an alternative to substance abuse and other destructive behaviors. I want you to look at that portrait and think what the arts can do for self-esteem, for recovery, and for healing. Closer to Home at the Falmouth Arts Center, which has wonderful arts programs, and this one is a ceramic art collaboration with the Alzheimer's Family Support Center. I'm just gonna read this as a testimonial by one of the caregivers and one of the people with Alzheimer's. with Alzheimer's. "This class is healing, comforting. Tell the people who fund this that it's so helpful. I appreciate it. My wife appreciates it." And this is from a husband of one of the people with Alzheimer's. Dream Tale Puppets. Again, this was done at the Falmouth Public Library, a free event. And I'm just going to give you by an individual artist. The context is from the Mass Cultural Council. "The loss of what they call gig income for individual artists in the first two years of the pandemic was over $10,000 in each year. So when we can fund individual artists as well as organizations, that goes a little bit of a way to make them whole." This is a quote with his permission. "This has not been an easy year for performing artists. After the summer, I had to engage in several jobs and projects, most of which were non-artistic to support myself." And this is the last program slide. It's important to understand this. Only the Falmouth Cultural Council and the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod fund individuals, like the slides you just saw with individual artists. All the others fund only nonprofits. Now, what I must tell you is, all the funding sources, including the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod, have been inundated with requests for funds. So although you might read how much money is coming down the pike, the truth of the matter is the need outweighs the amount of funds. It's also true that the Mass Cultural Council, individual pandemic relief, they had so many applications that, with the exception of some of their funding priorities, it's essentially going to be a lottery. So just like buying a lottery ticket, you win or you lose. The Falmouth Cultural Council vets all these applications, and we do the best we can to stretch the money to meet both the organizations and the individuals who serve the public good in Falmouth. I just want to say in closing, the picture is from Meeting House Clay Center grant, a teen drop-in during the pandemic, when especially teens who had hybrid learning, they were really in need for a place to gather and create art. And the Meeting House Clay Center had a grant from both the Bourne Cultural Council and the Falmouth Cultural Council. And I'll just reiterate it one more time.
Ms. Kuchemba, we're at 10.
One minute, less.
One more minute.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, you got it.
All in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Okay. I'll just say it one more time. Fund the joy. The current level of funding is not meeting the community's need for live, local programs. And that's the article. Please read it. And I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Keesh Wagle, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I wanted to give a couple reasons why we voted, recommended indefinite postponement. And I wanted to correct the record on the explanation here. Beyond the concerns with the way the article was written, there was no identification of where the money was coming from or who it was going to go to under the jurisdiction in the town. The way it was written was that we were going to give a very nice lady, Alice, $7,300 and walk away. And so we obviously took issue with that, and they kindly rewrote the article to meet what we requested. In addition, if you notice, it does have the, not the cultural council down there as the petitioner, that Alice was the petitioner. They had never voted this as a committee to do this, to ask for this money. They, I believe you said that it has been voted just the other day. So the committee did vote this. The last thing is, in the last sentence of the explanation, please note that we said there would be no town staff oversight over the allocation of town funds requested in this article. We found later on, in talking with the accountant, it is very well-tracked. It's on our financial books. They, the council has to submit records as to how it's spent before checks are written. So that is not an accurate statement there. I just wanted to correct that. The one concern that we still had was that, and I talked extensively with the moderator about it, it is a select board-appointed committee, even though it operates under a state law. We would have preferred if they went through the select committee, or the select board in handling this request. You can only imagine if we had every committee in town requesting funds without going through the select board. So we would request that that's how it would be done in the future. If that could be done, that would satisfy everything that our concerns that we had. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lichtenstein.
I was very happy when Alice came to me and asked me to make this motion, because I think the arts are more important to Falmouth now than they have ever been in the past. The past couple of years have been kind of depressing and isolating, and I think we all need cheering up more than we ever have before. Have you ever noticed when you smile, you feel better? That's what the arts can do for us. They make us smile and they bring us together. Maybe it's a dragon that walks through town meeting, or kids that want to put on a play or do a mural. These things can be funded by the cultural council if they have some additional funds. I don't know how we put a price on a smile, folks, or on good mental health. And I certainly haven't done a cost-benefit analysis on this article. But if you think about the number of smiles that we could generate from the small amount of money the cultural council is asking us for, this article may give us more bang for our buck than anything else we vote on tonight. I personally think Falmouth needs more smiles, and I hope you agree with me, and I really hope you support this article. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cook.
Peter Cook, Precinct VI. I really appreciated the presentation, the mention of inclusion, because I am the father of an adult son who's autistic. And he's been part of this community, and he actually was allowed to do a presentation, an art presentation at Arts Alive this summer, and he loved it. I also want to say that too, as happened to be emcee of the Falmouth Town Band, we certainly have benefited from your generosity. So I certainly appreciate the fact that you're asking for this small summer money. And I think the council is well-deserving of it.
Mr. Latimer.
Richard Latimer, Precinct I. I'm strongly in support of this article. The Arts Alive event brought a lot of people into our downtown area, brought a lot of money into our businesses, gave an opportunity for a lot of people to express themselves. I actually performed on Saturday, doing an hour of folk music. But, you know, I'm also a jock, okay? I littered twice. I started at Fullback in 1961 for Lawrence High School. So when I say this, I'm not anti-jock. But we just spent $100,000 on a controversial athletic program, which actually serves a relatively smaller segment of our population than what the cultural council does. And they're only asking for $7,500. I say vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Whitehead.
I would hope that we all vote for this. You know, everybody can read the newspaper about therapists, and there aren't enough help for people and all this kind of thing. Arts, music, art, poetry, literary works, it takes in everything. Music does a lot for people from age two all the way up to 80, 85, 90. We had people in the town band at 92 years old. We have people that are 12. It doesn't matter, but art is helpful. It is good for the brain. And boy, can you get a different mood, like we just heard. But it helps everybody, whether you are young, old, have an IQ of 50 or 141. So please vote for this. We don't have enough money for the arts, and it does so much good. Thank you.
Okay, since everyone that's spoken has spoken in favors, is there anyone that wants to speak against this article? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion.
Oh, there's somebody up here.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Mr. Donahue.
Bob Donahue, Precinct III. I'd like to amend this to $10,000.
That's not what I was expecting, Mr. Donahue.
Hey, look, if we can spend $100,000 on a study, we can spend $10,000 on our people of the arts that need it. Come on. Thank you.
Okay, the amendment is to strike $7,300 and insert $10,000 from Certified Free Cash. Any discussion on Mr. Donahue's amendment? Ms. Famon Silva? With the microphone, please. With the microphone, please.
Thank you. I just have a question. Is this going to be an annual allocation? Is this an annual commitment?
No, this would be a one-time appropriation of Certified Free Cash.
Well, can we amend the amendment to make this an annual?
The way you would need to do that is to each year vote it in the budget. And the example I gave the cultural council is when Peter Kerwin used to be our Human Services Director, he used to ask groups to come to town meeting with an article for funding. And if we gave them the funding, then he would work with the administration to put it in future annual budgets. And so I think that that's sort of, what we're looking at here is they're seeing if there's an appetite for it, and then to see if the selectmen will then put it in the annual budget going forward. But this is a one-time appropriation. All those in favor of Mr. Donahue's amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it by a majority. The question will now come on the main motion as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it by a majority. Article XI. Article XI, the recommendation of the select board is indefinite postponement. This is to repeal the single-use plastic water bottle ban. Is there anyone that would like to make a positive motion? Okay. Mr. Scherer moves as printed for Article XI. As the main motion, as printed. Any discussion on Article XI? The petitioner's not here tonight, okay? And Mr. Scherer just put a positive motion for Article XI on the floor. Yeah? As... No, no. So you said as written, so I thought you meant as printed. So you want indefinite postponement? Okay, well, then I don't take that as a main motion. Is there anyone that would like to make a positive motion on Article XI? Okay. The petitioner told me he had some town meeting member to make this motion, so I don't know. Is it you?
I didn't make the motion. I'm for this. I'm Dave Chevry, Precinct V, and I'm for repealing it. I think we allow soda and other unhealthy drinks. We have no problem with those plastics. The plastic water bottles that are used now have much less plastic in them than, you know, soda bottles. I'd be in favor of, you know, the 5-cent return that, you know, Maine does and some other places, but that's, I think that would have to be done at a statewide level. I think it hurts small businesses that can't sell them anymore. The alternatives cost more. And the reality is people are just buying them in other towns and then bring them in here.
Okay, so the main motion is as printed. Further discussion? Mr. Nielsen.
Oh, there's a lot. Where do you want me to go?
Mr. Nielsen in the back. He was the petitioner of the next article that does, asks for the same thing in a different way. We're only going to have one debate on this, by the way.
Hi, good evening. Dana Nielsen, Precinct I. I was the petitioner of Article XII, but Robert and I decided to team up and try to just do one article since it was pretty much the same thing. I just want to say, Robert couldn't be here tonight, he's sick, but he wanted to thank everybody who signed our petition to get this on the warrant tonight. He's watching on FCTV. I started collecting signatures for this this summer when I was working at Kenyon's Market after listening to customers and both local and tourists voice their displeasure at not being able to purchase bottled water at the store or anywhere in town. When I learned Mash B and Sandwich had repealed their bans, I was hopeful Falmouth would consider doing the same. The ban was enacted with good intentions. I'm not against recycling or helping keep the environment clean, and I appreciate the large blue bins we all received this summer. However, having worked in retail for 30 years, I'm against bans that hurt local businesses. This ban does that. Citizens of Falmouth and tourists who visit have to drive to neighboring towns to purchase non-carbonated, unflavored water, whether it be in a single bottle or a case. Excuse me. They could even have the same bottles that are not allowed to be sold in local stores delivered to their homes by Amazon, Stop &amp; Shop's Peapod service, or the vendors themselves. So what was the goal of the ban? There are still water bottles in town, they're just being bought elsewhere. Products that replace the plain, unflavored water bottles in stores are of higher-grade plastic, aluminum, or the Tetra-type boxes that are harder to recycle than a typical Poland Springs water bottle. These products are at least two and a half times more expensive than the ones they have replaced, something that matters to people who are on a budget in today's economy with inflation being what it is. The businesses in Falmouth just want a fair playing field with our neighboring towns, and many citizens just want convenience of staying in town when having to make their purchases. We all believe that by working together, we can achieve our goals through education of the public about the benefits of recycling and refillable bottles, and supported infrastructure to fill those bottles without hurting the businesses that help make the town great. I ask you to vote in favor of this article to repeal the water bottle ban, and I thank you for your consideration.
And Ms. Carey. And then Ms. Segal.
Thank you. Rosemary Carey, Precinct V. When Falmouth Town Meeting passed the bottle bill ban in 2020, the message was clear. We wanted to reduce our use of plastics, starting with the most insidious, single-use water bottles. We considered the facts at that time, none of which have changed. Plastic pollution is still choking our oceans and killing off nearly half of the world's bird species and marine animals and ocean life. Plastics are still made of fossil fuels with emissions that contribute to our dangerously warming planet. Plastic water bottles still leach chemicals into our bodies where they're linked to cancer, diabetes, endocrine disruption, and obesity. The plastic recycling rate is only about 10%. The rest are incinerated or sit in landfills to break down over hundreds of years. In 2020, we weighed the positives. Falmouth has a clean, safe drinking water supply, which we are working extremely hard to protect. Public water filling stations are widely available and becoming more so. Reusable canteens are easily accessible, relatively inexpensive, and save money over a very short time. The bottle ban has been shown to reduce litter in our town and put fewer bottles in the waste stream. Given all of these facts, how can we be okay with reversing our decision, putting profits over our own health, town resources, fragile ecosystems, and our planet? anywhere. The reasons to keep the ban in place are overwhelming. And let's not forget, this town meeting has also recently voted for our town to become a green community, declared a climate emergency, and approved the hiring of a sustainability director. Falmouth is a leader in green sustainability initiatives. Why would we go backward? Please vote no on Article 11.
Ms. Segal.
We've heard and read a great deal about convenience being the focus of this article. I suggest that because of our arrogant and irresponsible behavior over centuries, we have forfeited the luxury of convenience. In 2015, the town invested $46.5 million to filter and deliver safe drinking water, which must meet stringent federal and state regulations. That convenient bottle from a store calling itself La Dada Spring Water is completely unregulated and could have any number of dangerous chemicals in it that aren't listed on the label. And by the way, it's a lot more expensive than turning on your tap. In 2010, it was estimated that out of the 275 million metric tons of plastic waste generated in coastal countries, five to 13 tons of plastic entered the ocean. That was in 2010. That pollution makes up 80% of all ocean debris. I think many of us know about how those tiny plastic bits attach to things like algae, then go on to resemble food particles from marine life and birds. If you don't care about that little problem, are you aware that plastic, especially in these single-use bottles, degrades and affects human health? Look it up. Plastic being broadcast throughout our environment is only partly due to single-use bottles, but it's one of the causes of our environmental problems such as flooding and droughts, mass starvation, decimation of crops, wildlife and the environment, and garbage patch poisoning of sea life. All of these for no other reasons than convenience and individual profit. Falmouth has been a leader in sustainability. Let's not go backward. In closing, I offer you this. It's water, and it's in a faucet near you.
Barbara Snyder, precinct four. I could talk about this from my marine mammal rescue experience. I could talk to you about it from my beach committee work and my litter reduction work and many times, many hours walking with Alan picking up litter. I could talk to you about it from my dog park work, but I'm not going to do that. I'm going to talk to you about this from my experience of 25 years teaching high school. I have had many a day when I felt down and dark and hopeless, but I always got more hope and upbeat again by looking at what our young people are doing. And this is something our young people are asking of us. They're telling us enough. You have ruined our earth enough. Help us get it back. When you have young people taking the time to call you up and ask you, please don't do this, don't reverse this, we've got to do something. How can we not do that for our children and our grandchildren? Do not reverse this.
Okay. Gentlemen in the balcony, and then Ms. Shepherd.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Philip Gessen. I'm a student at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and I grew up in Falmouth. And I drove three hours from UMass to come here to speak here tonight. So why am I here today? I drove three hours from Western Massachusetts to get here to town meeting because I believe that we need to live in a more sustainable world. And I believe that Falmouth is at an incredibly significant crossroads tonight with a decision that will ripple out beyond our local community. Why am I here today? Because I believe that we need to change our relationship with plastic. Since the 1950s, we, the human world, have been mass-producing plastic. We've been creating plastic and using it in plastic chairs, plastic tea kettles, plastic storage boxes, plastic water bottles. We've placed plastic in our cars, in our beds, in our bathrooms, in our homes. It's a material that's durable and cheap to make, and so we've made use of it wherever we could. And yet that thing that makes plastic so useful is also what makes it so dangerous. It takes an average piece of plastic over 400 years to degrade. 400 years. After you throw away that piece of Saran Wrap you used to cover last night's leftovers, that see-through sheet will take over 400 years to degrade. That old tea kettle you threw away, that you decided to throw out last spring cleaning, that will take four centuries to break apart. The plastic that we made in the 1950s, it is still out there today. About 88% of the plastic we've ever created is still out there. That's 7.3 billion metric tons. It's in the Pacific Garbage Patch that makes up 600 square miles of the Pacific Ocean. It's in our food in the form of microplastics. 7.3 billion tons of plastic is still out there, and yet we're creating more new plastics at rates that are the fastest produced ever. We're treating the world like a landfill, and eventually it's going to fill up. And we're seeing signs of it every single day, and yet we're producing it at a rate that has never been seen before. And so that brings us to here tonight, to a relatively small town called Falmouth where we can have an impact on this towering issue. But how does a decision by a small town on one very specific type of plastic influence the overshadowing monstrosity of the real issue? If we repeal the ban, we're signaling to the world that even in a coastal town where we're in touch with our environment, plastic is not seen as big enough of an issue to sacrifice some profit and a simple convenience for. Our voice, our decision here tonight, whether we keep the plastic bottle ban or not, it won't be a decision made by a small town on a local issue. It'll be a decision made by an environmental leader, a stance on whether the environment is worth more than our profit and convenience. Your decision would ripple across and affect the momentum of the bottle ban movement and more across the entire Cape. In turn, that could affect the future of this movement across the state and across the nation. Your decision here, whether it be a yes or no, will change others' minds outside of our community, and that could change lives and the world. And so in the capacity of a member of the younger generation, I urge you, please, think about the world you want to live in and the world you want your children, grandchildren, and the generations to come to inherit. I urge you to vote no on this article and the next, and to keep the commercial plastic water bottle ban in place. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Shepherd.
Much of what I was going to say has been said, but I look around this auditorium, and the majority of us are grandparent age. We are going to be dead when the world really goes to hell in a handbasket. But our children and our grandchildren will still be here. What are we leaving them? Is anybody paying attention to the conference in Egypt? If Judy Fenwick were here, she would, where she's at that conference, she'd be exploding through the roof. We have to do what we can do, however small. Just remember, every one of us has plastic in our blood veins now. Every piece of seafood, lovely fresh seafood that we eat, has plastic in it. There is absolutely no reason to turn this ban around. And by the way, these bottles don't even really get recycled. They get gathered, but right now, they're just sitting in huge bales in storage because nobody's really figured out a way to do anything with them. Please do not pass this reversal of the ban.
Okay, Ms. Lichtenstein.
As the coordinator of the annual spring Falmouth Town Cleanup, I would like to report to town meeting that your passing the ban has worked. It's cut down on the number of bottles that all of us bag people pick up along the road. There's an old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Please, don't vote for this. Vote no.
Rich Latimer, precinct one. We've just heard several very powerful arguments for leaving this bylaw in place. And what have we heard for removing the bylaw? Some tourists complained at a market of the inconvenience. Where's our sense of proportion here? And as far as going into other towns and to buy these plastic bottles and bring them in here, well, yes. But are maintaining this bylaw will be incentive for like-minded people in those other towns to follow suit, and then that problem will go away. And if that problem doesn't go away, then plastic really is forever. The gentleman from UMass commented on how plastic has a life of 400 years. Well, just think, if the pilgrims who landed on Plymouth Rock 400 years ago had disposable plastic bottles, they'd still be on the beach there. Let's shoot this article down. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Welch.
Kelly Welch, precinct two. I respectfully call the question.
Okay, we have a motion to move the previous question. That's closed discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It's a pair of the ayes have it by the two-thirds, and the question is called. The question will now come on the main motion. Article 11 as printed. A yes vote is to repeal the bylaw, a no vote is to leave it in place. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It's a pair of the ayes have it by a majority, and the article does not pass. Article 12, the main motion, will be the recommendation from the select board?
Article 12. I move Article 12 indefinite postponement.
Okay, the main motion on Article 12 is indefinite postponement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator.
Select board for the main motion.
I move Article 13 as printed.
Article 13 as printed. This is to adopt a bylaw in the code of Falmouth for the disposal of certain surplus firearms. We have an opening presentation for Article 13.
You're not getting away. Good evening, thank you very much. Article 13 simply states that in the future, Falmouth will destroy surplus police guns that fall under the assault weapons ban as defined in Massachusetts. What happens if we don't destroy these military-grade guns that can pierce helmets and body armor and are illegal for the citizenry to own in Massachusetts except for the police? Well, regardless of who the first purchasers would be, after our assault weapons are traded in and leave our police, they would most likely eventually appear in other states, possibly the neighboring states of New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, where they're not banned and where they could be used against their police, against private security guards and school security guards, which are outgunned, and of course, of innocents. When we visited a precinct meetings last week, some interesting questions were raised that you might have in mind now. Would this affect hunting shotguns, rifles, and handguns that those of us who have a license to carry, known as an LTC, or as a firearms identification card, commonly referred to as an FID, would it affect what we could buy? No. Only those weapons banned for ownership by individuals in Massachusetts, only the banned weapons would be affected by this article. Another question that came up that's valid as we're thinking about finances here is what the town would have to pay to have these guns destroyed. Well, the state police provides this service gratis to all the towns. So I didn't let Deborah get away from this because she's the inspiration. She's been solid on this since we started thinking about this issue and this possibility, and I'd like you to hear from her now.
Thanks, Nan. I'm Deborah Warner. I live in precinct two. I want to thank the select board for your unanimous support in voting this article to come before this town meeting. And I want to thank the more than 300 citizens across the town of Falmouth who signed a petition to have assault guns as defined by the Massachusetts general law destroyed once they are deemed by the police to no longer be of use to the town's police force. This past Saturday, two days ago, a circular stone memorial was unveiled to honor the families of the 20 students, first graders, and the six teachers who were killed at Sandy Hook Elementary School 10 years ago next month. It was a time when again those families came together to once more mourn their loved ones and to weep over the lives that were lost that day because an assault rifle fell into the hands of an individual who suffered from psychiatric illnesses. Yesterday, the public, people like you and me, were invited to visit that now permanent monument that sits on the holy ground where Sandy Hook School once stood, and those students and teachers breathe their last. Since that day 10 years ago, and for years before and since, there have been countless shootings across this country. They have resulted in thousands of deaths and injuries across the board. Civilians and law enforcement, children and the elderly, people going about their daily lives, people going to worship, people sitting in a movie or going to a dance, coming together, or children sitting in a school, or college students sitting in a lecture hall. The article before you is a small answer to the gravity of gun violence that is permeating and poisoning this country. It's a small answer. It's a single answer. It grew out of citizens refusing to be silent and to stand by and be stunned again because of gun violence in schools, grocery stores, houses of worship, or countless other venues. In voting to adopt this bylaw, you... In voting to adopt this bylaw, you are supporting the Falmouth Police Department in their future decisions when they deem that assault rifles owned by the town of the Falmouth Police Department are no longer of use to the department and can therefore, and will therefore, be destroyed instead of turned over to a gun dealer. You're choosing to reach out to the literally thousands of people whose lives have been totally changed forever or ended because of assault rifles falling into the hands of those who used them in a manner for which they were never intended. You are quite simply friends tonight, given the opportunity to choose life over death. Thank you for your support of this bylaw change.
All set? Okay. Mr. Mancini?
Mark Mancini, Precinct 8. I just have a couple corrections. One is just a typographical one. Under definitions, the last sentence, I believe it should say included but not limited. It says no limited. So...
Yeah, we'll get that as a scribner's error.
Okay. Two, an assault weapon is by no means a military-style weapon. They are not even comparable, so that was an incorrect statement that was made. Three, there also is a financial loss because when we trade in the firearms to buy new ones, we do, the police department gets reimbursed, so it's not free just to destroy them. We actually lose money. And then, if the chief of police is here, I do have two questions for him.
Yeah, he's on the balcony.
First one, when was the last time someone in Falmouth was killed with an assault weapon?
I'm not aware of anyone being killed with an assault weapon.
Okay, so never. Two, Chief, have you ever heard anywhere in the United States of a previously-owned firearm from a police department being used in a crime? Assault weapon specifically?
I am not aware. I haven't read anything that a police weapon was ever used in an assault like that.
Thank you. This is, seems to be a solution looking for a problem, and there isn't one. All this is gonna do is lose the town some money, and it'd be a boon for a gun manufacturer because the supply's still gonna be there, so now I get to manufacture more guns. So, I ask people to vote no on this.
Back right? Mr. Doogie?
Just one quick correction. A gentleman who just spoke, assault weapons and military weapons both fire, the ones that are being spoken about here, either a 2.23 round or a 5.56 round. They both have muzzle velocities of approximately 3,200 feet per second. They are almost identical. The one difference might be that one has select fire and the other one doesn't. But as far as the round being fired, as far as muzzle velocity, both equal.
Further discussion? Mr. Latimer?
Rich Latimer, Precinct 1. To correct the gentleman over there who spoke against this article. There's no confusion about, or ambiguity about what weapons are here or what they are classified as because the article expressly says those weapons that are defined in Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Sections 128 and 131M as amended. So there's no real dispute here over the definition of whether this is an assault weapon or whatever. It's a very clear article, and I support it. Thank you.
Further discussion? In the center aisle?
John Nolan, Precinct 1. Just because nobody in Falmouth has been killed by an assault weapon is no excuse to put more on the street. We don't, we get a small financial loss, but again, there are maybe, maybe a dozen assault weapons that won't be back on the street, and they might not stay in Falmouth. They'll be sold around the state or around New England, and we don't need them out there. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Famon Silver?
Thank you very much. Every morning when I wake up and listen to the news, including either yesterday morning or this morning, I heard about gun violence or mass shootings involving three or more victims. The two most recent were at two universities, Virginia, University of Virginia, and I believe it was in Idaho, just today. We must do something, even if it's a small contribution, to solving this crisis of the proliferation of weapons of what are mass destruction on our streets in the United States. We have a unique problem in our country, and we must address it. Falmouth can take this very small step. We can afford it, and we must commit to solving the crisis of gun violence. Now is the time, and I hope you will pass this article. Thank you.
Am I back right?
I am Madison Valley of Precinct 7. I do not think I have to really, I don't think I really need to speak about how. I come from the generation where school shootings and that mass shootings are pretty much considered normal, and they have been for the majority of my life. Anything we can do to maybe stop that so that my kids do not have to live in the same world that I have to, where we just hear about school shootings and mass shootings just every single week, I, I think that would be a better country for us to live in. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Neto? Joe? Joe, did you want to? Okay. Mr. Neto is moving the previous question to close discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by the two-thirds, and the question will come on the main motion to adopt a bylaw requiring the disposal of certain surplus firearms. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It depends on the shares that the ayes have it by a majority. Article 14. The recommendation of the Select Board is indefinite postponement. The petitioner is gonna make a positive motion.
I, I move the motion as printed. Thank you. My name's Malcolm Donald, and I'm from Precinct 6. And before I start, I'd like to thank Alan Robinson and Mary Reither for their work contributing to this legislation. Here's what Article 14 is about. I'm certain if you've been out to dinner or ordered takeout, you are familiar with these containers. In late summer, I just happened to have a conversation with Mary Reither's brother, Mary Reither being the town recycling coordinator. Our conversation led to the topic of recycling, one of my particular interests. Mary's brother mentioned that black plastic containers are not recyclable and get trashed. What? Say again? These black plastic containers are not recyclable and get trashed. Now wait a minute. These are plastic. Plastic is recyclable, right? Yes, and yes. No, black plastic gets trashed anyway in our recycling system. I was astounded. I had no idea. And venture to say the general public is unaware as well. Although I never liked the idea of plastic takeout containers because I know compostable alternatives are available, I thought at least they were recyclable. But no. Now, how can that be? Here's the problem. The equipment at the Massachusetts recycling facilities where Falmouth recycling trucks emptied their loads can't read the little recycling symbol on the bottom of the black plastic, and it rejects it as trash. Here's the little recycling symbol. Can you see it? Well, the recycling equipment can't see it either, but for a different reason. Then that result, black plastic, which is theoretically recyclable, is not recyclable in Falmouth's recycling stream. As I previously stated, there are alternatives to black plastic, some even being compostable, and Falmouth should substitute them in order to raise the quality of Falmouth's recycling stream so that more of the recyclables that we put in our barrels actually get recycled. This article would make it happen. In reaching out to the community, I contacted Michael Casperian, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and as it turns out, Chamber members, many of the users of black plastic, are willing to put an end to its use but don't want legal ramifications. Consequently, Mary Reither, Alan Robinson, and I met with Michael Casperian, reviewed the black plastic issue, and came to an understanding that the use of black plastic in Falmouth will be eliminated through a voluntary campaign by the Chamber. We have been assured that the Chamber members will voluntarily stop using black plastic and will persuade non-Chamber members to do likewise. This is a resolution to the black plastic problem. And I might add, success with the way two opposing parties resolved an issue with utmost civility and respect, something sorely needed in this day and age. Thank you, Michael Casperian and Chamber members. The proof, however, as they say, will be in the pudding. However, we believe that the black plastic problem will be solved this way. I hereby withdraw my article, and thank you for your time.
The petitioner moves indefinite postponement on Article 14. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this time, I'll recognize the Chair of the Finance Committee. Notify us how much we've spent at this town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You have appropriated $13,090,403.26 tonight.
Okay, at this time, I'll recognize the Chair of the Select Board for the notification of our next annual town meeting.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Our next annual town meeting will be April 10th, 2023.
Okay, April 10th, 2023. This time, the Chair would entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting, so moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and I declare this meeting dissolved.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of town meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
St. Joseph Parish of Falmouth provides a place to worship God and refresh your spirit with others. Here are some of our upcoming events.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Since 1971, Sea Education Association has been inspiring ocean scholars, stewards, and leaders at sea and on our Woods Hole campus with programs for college, gap, and high school students. More information at se.edu. Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction maintenance to site work for From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson, LLP, have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design, 508-540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly-added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Lisa Peterson, Azendorf, William Ravis Real Estate Mortgage Insurance,
Grossi Septic Solutions, 508-548-7500.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, 508-539-3888.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated, 508-548-9788. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Every lighthouse needs a keeper. FriendsofNobsko.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, 2 Water Street, Woods Hole.
The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org, 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions, 781-930-5000.
Wacoite Congregational Church, 508-548-5269.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery, 508-548-5288.
M. Duffney Builders, 508-540-3625.
Neighborhood Falmouth, 508-564-7543.
Danny's Barber Shop, 508-548-6013.
David Rogers Electric, 508-274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance, 1-800-800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations, 508-540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth, 508-548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center, 508-548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five, 508-457-5252.
Ed Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More, 508-457-9454.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers, Windfall, Walmart.